Got them all made.
That doesn't work. That works.
We'll call the meeting to order.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, we don't seem to have a procedure, so we're going to say none. We have civil reflection, and this is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance or a moment for silence after the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this point, I have a question as a committee as a whole. I think I have the authority to do that, but I'm sure I'll have opposition. So I'd like to call this my motion, my first motion, would be for a committee as a whole. Do I have a second? Or can't I do it?
If I can do it, I'll second it.
Should we ask the attorney if you can do it?
Well, I have...
Committee of the whole.
No, committee of the whole. I'm calling a committee of the whole.
You're at a meeting of the board, so you are already in committee of the whole.
So they can, the community can...
No.
That's when I'm not in a committee of a whole.
The Open Meetings Act refers to the committee of the whole as the entire board. So that would be, for instance, if you were to appoint yourselves, the board rules committee of the whole. That would be what that is. If what you are seeking to do is to turn this into a public hearing, those are, those are different rules for public hearings and notice requirements. So I guess I would ask for additional clarification, Madam Supervisor.
Clarification regarding...
What you want.
What I'm looking for. My intent is to allow the community to speak.
There are two public comment periods.
That's correct, but that's not the same as if I were to call John Reich, for example, because I think he's an expert when dealing with roads. I can do that as a committee of a whole.
I, I would dispute that at this point. You are here in a regular meeting for the board to conduct business. If you wish to add that to the agenda, if the board were to agree to have that kind of period, you certainly could do that. I also think as individual members of the board, you're entitled to have this space during non-board meeting times to do that.
So basically, what you're saying is I have to have a board approval?
In order to change...
Because this is not a special meeting, this is a regular board meeting.
In order to change the agenda, which is in front of you. You have an agenda which calls for certain things to occur in a certain order for the operation of township business.
So you're saying that committee of a whole needs to be on the agenda?
I'm saying to accomplish your desired outcome, which is to allow the opportunity, what I'm guessing is for the uninhibited, no time limit type of conversation, no specific topic on the agenda. I would suggest that that is accomplished through seeking to amend the agenda to include that.
It's an interesting thought. Okay.
Thank you.
Well... I'm not sure I necessarily agree with that, but that's an interesting thought. So it sounds as if this, it sounds as if at this point, the committee of a whole needs to be put on the agenda. Okay? So my comments at this point, let me pull those up. And I'm going to read them so that everybody hears them or everybody understands what I'm saying, and I too will understand.
If we have more volume than the audio system.
I have no idea.
Closer to your mic, maybe?
No, I'm, that sucker's right in my face, so...
Is it on?
It's on, I think. I'm on.
I turned it up. I would recommend that you just maybe speak more directly into it.
Just a bit a little?
It's away from your face.
Well, because mine's off, I'm sorry.
Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
Will that work? I've often said, Jim, that we need to have special seats for people who are hard of hearing to be able to follow our meetings. That has gone nowhere, but that has been suggested a long time ago. All right, so I would like to take a moment for the Board of Trustees to consider providing me and the residents of Bath Township answers to some of these questions. Number one, you have eliminated many of my duties I was elected to perform by voters of Bath Township. Number two, why did you, you want to put me on time?
No.
Oh, okay. Why did you eliminate my office spending over $650 to change the locks when you could have had a key taken from me that night? Which would have been actually more legal. When the locks were changed before the board township, the Board of Trustees formally approved the change. I am required to work from my home without the township conveying to me the reasons for your actions, even after I sent you a communication requesting this. Number five, why did you not contact me pertaining to the incident when the deputy clerk advised you that I have a disagreement with her? Item six, is now the, I hope you're getting this. It's now the Bath Township policy to refer all business workplace disagreements to the Michigan State Police without speaking to all persons involved in the dispute. Seven, why did the board acquiesce to allow trustee Feedbin Bliss and the superintendent to orchestrate a response to the employee's complaint without contacting me to ascertain my interpretation of the incident? Eight, why did this board, or did this board allow trustee Feedbin Bliss, superintendent to encourage the deputy clerk to file a police report regarding the incident without contacting me to determine my description of the incident and independently evaluate the circumstances from both persons involved with the incident? Nine, did the township legal counsel, I'll make copies if you guys want this. Did the township legal counsel support trustee Feedwin's Bliss and the superintendent's initiative to delegate and encourage the responsibility of this investigation without seeking to determine my side of this workplace disagreement? Ten, further questions by action taken by the township when legal counsel, law firm authorized a publication in July of this year stating in part, when an employee becomes, okay, when employee becomes aware of a potential discrimination, harassment, or a hostile work environment, problems in the workplace, the employer has a responsibility to investigate these allegations. Now again, this is the legal firm quotations. Once a complaint has been received, or once the employer has reason to believe that discrimination slash harassment has taken place, the investigation process begins. Unquote, these are all in quotes. Your township should consider having township legal counsel perform the investigation or asking your township legal counsel for a referral to an attorney for routinely performing investigations. Basic investigation outline, reach out to your complainant and advise respondents of the investigation. The respondent, who the person's complaint is made against, should be advised that a complaint has been made about their behavior. The existence of a complaint should not be hidden. Analysis, the facts gathered from the written material and interviews must be analyzed against the legal standard. Report, the facts and the, and the analysis should be captured in a report. An investigation report is typically written and delivered to the employer. In our case, the township board. Number 11, did the township board not allow legal counsel legal advice? Or did the legal counsel provide advice that was contrary to the firm's position on the matter? Obviously, I was never contacted. The existence of the complaint was initially hidden, even after I questioned the reason with the Board of Trustees' actions. Twelve, who authorized the payment to the township legal counsel of approximately $50,000, and that's an approximate, regarding the matter without contacting me about the incident when someone could have simply asked me what happened? And of course, I am part of the board. Thirteen, the deputy clerk advised the Board of Trustees about this incident occurring on August 25th of 2022. And a complaint, a criminal complaint was not issued against me until my attorney inquired about the status of the investigation in February of 2023. What did the township do about the incident during the delay? Fourteen, as you are aware, the criminal, the criminal trial conduct, concerning this matter was, was recently held July 25th of 2003. I was found not guilty. As a matter was mishandled from the start of the township. If, is the township going to pay my legal fees? I extended to defend myself regarding this false allegation. The judge, this is 15, who adjudicated this matter, found the testimony of at least two and probably more Bath Township employees to be not credible. What action had been or is going to be taken against those employees whose testimony did not substantiate the false assault allegation? Sixteen, the board is considering disciplinary action against the, is the board? That's my question. Is the board considering disciplinary action against the superintendent, who is also the human resource person for the township mishandling of this incident? Seventeen, is the board considering taking action against, here we go, trustee Feedwin Bliss, who took the head, the lead of the township's response to August 25th of 2022 incident at that time without the board approval and subsequently mishandled it? Eighteen, does the board envision establishing, this will be good, an ethics policy, in my opinion, that is greatly needed? Does the township, this is 19, and the last. Does the township envision establishing a retention policy for security videos to enable clarification of issues like the August 25th, '22 incident? Thank you for your patience on that. I do have a quick summary. I have given a lengthy and serious thoughts about the rationale for the lack of assistance from the Board of Trustees and the township personnel. It may be that the Board of Trustees and township personnel favored another candidate to be elected supervisor. That I do not quietly go along to get along, or am I a team player? As it was termed to me, you're not a team player or a combination. So I want to say that twice, of those things I didn't know. I began this journey upon the retirement with the thought of giving back to the community, only to be rebuffed by the Board of Trustees and many township staff. No one has reached out to me to offer help or guidance and assistance. This is my best exemplified by the fact a number of Board Trustees has only been in my office since I was elected. And that is absolutely true. One, since being elected, I have been verbally assaulted and on at least four occasions. While in my, while not in my office, I have had maps on the Bath Township that I had purchased with my own money, torn down, they were torn down, from my office on more than one occasion. Subsequently, office personnel had been advised they would not put anything on their walls. I've been, I then purchased two tripods with my own money to display the maps. I have been refused to allow to go into the basement of the township office building as a Board of Trustee, as a supervisor. I've been refused. I had a table that I purchased with my own money to be used in our board meeting room, so members of the public and the staff presenting to the board had a place to sit and have adequate room for paper and books or exhibits that they might have with them, instead of standing at a small podium. This gratuitous effect on my part, effort on my part, caused an adverse reaction to the township as the table was stolen from the boardroom, only to show up several months later without any explanation. Whoa, it was found. That was pretty much what I had, or what I was told. I have been the recipient of a, of mail containing, you'll love this, an explosive device with a confetti shaped like little penises. And it blew up in my office. And everybody laughed about it. They thought it was, I laughed. I thought it was hysterical. I was supposed to be upset about it. Eight, the board passed several motions to eliminate my non-statutory duties that I was elected to perform, such as supervising the superintendent. Although I am the chairman of the Board of Trustees, the board went so far as to pass a motion that I not determine where I was going to sit during the board meetings and gave the duty to the superintendent. A book entitled Robert's Rules for Dummies was placed in my chair anonymously. Anonymously. Eleven, I've been accused of not conducting a meeting effectively, and I asked too many questions. However, I strongly believe in providing sufficient transparency of Bath Township government to the public as well as within my, as well, hang on. I lost my train of thought. Transparency of the Bath Township government to the public as well as the public should have adequate time to express their opinions. In other words, the three-minute rule. Neither of which, in my opinion, is currently sufficient. Twelve, the board and staff have consistently not provided adequate and detailed information concerning township activities and agendas, items provided to the meeting. Maybe that is why I asked so many questions. I've also been accused of not doing my duties. Which, again, that has been done numerous times. I have been consistently shunned by many of the office personnel, which actually is not so bad. I go in, do my work, and come out. Fourteen, in an effort to save taxpayer dollars, I purchased with my own money a printer, the paper to use it, and the replacement ink cartridges. And I did that for that reason. I don't need to bother anybody else with my doings or the cost for the township. I have paid for any training that requires funding from my own money. I have never charged the township money for travel. In closing, I believe because Bath Township employees serve at will, and as a number of these employees have historically been terminated, and you must go along to get along to keep your job, environment has been created. I recent, I recall speaking to the superintendent, one particular termination, and asked if she had counseled the employee prior to the termination. The superintendent stated, I don't have to. Their employees serve at will. Which is probably true. But that doesn't negate talking to the employee to find out what the problem was. What you have done and continue to do is just wrong. Let me read that again. It needs to be crushed, because that's what's infected. Whatever. What you have done and continue to do is just plain unjustifiable, and you know it. I want the people who elected me to know it too. That's you all. Needless to say, I will not go along to get along and will continue to seek information from the public and, when needed, ask questions. Thank you for your patience. It's appreciated. You're a captive audience. You didn't have a choice. Okay. Now, approve the agenda. I have a motion for approving the agenda, which is item three. So you better get a pencil out. Number 13, unfinished business, A and B, strike it. My reason for doing additional strikes on this is because we have the right, and we should be explaining to the public exactly what's happened. So again, 13, unfinished business, I want A and B striked. I want you to strike it. Large B, items for action, B and C. Under new business, 14, A, B, C, and D. Now, these I don't want struck so we don't address them. I'm asking to move them to our next meeting, which is August 21st. Say it better. That Monday. So it's not that we're saying, I'm saying, no, I do not want these on the agenda. I'm just saying, move them. So if you strike those from it, that's what I'm asking for your motion, is to move them off this agenda for August 7th and move to Monday, August 21st. Sure.
I'm sorry, the items under big B?
Yep. You would have unfinished business, A, A and B. Then you have items for action, large B, which would be B and C.
B and C. Okay, thank you.
That's correct. And then on the second page, or our third page, new business, 14, item B, large B, A, B, C, and D. And again, that's only to remove them from the agenda for our next meeting, August 21st.
Can I add mine in here now, or want to do them all together?
Well, we need a motion.
Or one at a time?
Yep, one at a time, because we have a motion. And so, that's my motion.
I really need an answer.
Okay, no.
14B A.
14B A, okay, early voting? Yeah, I figured too. That particular one could, is not as time-sensitive as our having to do it immediately today. So in two weeks, yeah, no, it's not. It's, it's something that can be, because I've read it myself. It can be, and we can approve it, which I'm not saying, don't approve it, because it will get approved. Everything on here will get approved. But I'm saying we're moving it till the 27th, or to the 21st?
I think it's 21st.
21st.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
I need to have the answer to the county by Thursday.
Then why is it on here now? Why didn't you put it on July 17th?
There's a lot of changes we're going to, and we're doing them as fast as I can.
So you're saying, you have, so what you're saying to me is, that's time-sensitive because you have to have it by Thursday?
Yes.
And so our okay allows for the additional?
I need some for your support.
Yeah.
One way or the other is what I'm asking.
So the county needs for our township to support it?
I have two options.
Okay.
I can go over to in more detail?
No, I, right now it'd be fine. What are the two options? What you're saying is you have to have two options in order to, early voting, to let them know it's okay.
Proposal two, change to we have nine days of early voting. The county is going to have an early voting center or sites, I'm sorry.
Is it possible if she's going to take the time?
I didn't recognize anybody at this point, and you're out of order. Do I get to use a gavel? You're out of order. Go ahead, finish. Yes.
Okay. So we have to make a choice on the countywide voting center. Do we want to have Bath Township be a countywide voting center? Or do we want to have Bath Township residents go to Duitt Township or to Bingham?
And they're asking that question to be completed on Thursday? And they didn't have that question on the 17th of July?
We've been discussing this at least two days a week for a long time.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of changes in it. We have a lot of answers.
Was that a change?
This?
No, the, the part where we'll either go to Duitt or we stay with Bath Township. I'm looking for the time-sensitive pieces, looking for the time-sensitive pieces that I don't think are there yet.
We have a choice.
Okay.
We can send the voters.
No, I understand that, but I'm asking you, was that choice not there July 17th?
No.
Okay, okay.
Wow.
No, no, it was Tuesday, right? Your meeting was Tuesday? It was Tuesday.
So last Tuesday, they decided whether we have a choice?
We've been throwing, the county's been throwing all sorts of options up in the air. How are we going to make this work? Proposal two has a bunch of stuff that has not been finalized.
So this board will decide whether we're going to stay in Bath or go to Duitt?
We need to have, we have a choice. Send our voters to a countywide early voting center located in Duitt Charter Township or Bingham, or become part of the countywide voting early center, and we'll have locate, and we will go along with Bath, Duitt, and Bingham.
Okay, so you're saying this board is going to decide?
I would like your opinion.
No, it's an item for action.
Yes, it is.
So we're going to decide which, so we'll have a discussion as to which one it'll be. Is that what you're trying to say? Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Because you won't make up that decision. That decision has to be with the board.
I can make it, but I thought it might be very helpful to get everybody's opinion on it.
Okay, then I would suggest that this be struck until the 21st.
Sorry?
Yes.
There's a motion?
My motion. I know. That's what I'm saying. She had a question. The motion is made, the second was done, so...
By who, please? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, she didn't.
I don't think I did.
Okay, is there a second for my motion? That scrunched-up face, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm hearing her question that she's got a, something we didn't know about that we couldn't be done.
Are you, yeah, are you understanding?
Can I amend your amendment?
No, what she's, what she's saying, what she's saying is, there's a choice of where you're going to vote.
Right.
And I think, if I'm understanding, what the clerk is saying is, this board is going to decide where we make it.
But there's a timeframe involved.
Now, hang on. Can she make that decision? Yes, she can. Now, do you think, I have to ask you this, so are you going to Bingham? Are you going to send the voters to Bingham? You go right ahead. That's, so the time factor isn't there. It's not...
Can we give her permission to make that decision?
She has permission to make it.
Oh, okay. All right, then I, I second the motion.
All right. Go ahead, take your roll call.
Excuse me, Madam Supervisor?
Do you have a question?
I have discussion on the motion.
Do you have a question?
No, I have discussion on the motion.
Then you're out of order. The motion is made.
I am allowed to have discussion on a motion.
You've already called once out of order. Do you want a second? What's your discussion?
I think we should keep the agenda as it is so that we can continue the business of the township moving forward.
Then you can do that with a yes vote.
Might I be able to finish?
You can do that with a yes vote. Duty order of the vote.
Excuse me, I have the opportunity to have discussion on a motion.
You've already stated that you don't support the motion. You've already stated that, and you can do it on a vote.
You cut me off. I did not finish my statement.
You finished your statement, Ryan.
Thank you. I think we should keep the agenda as is, keep the business of order going forward. I appreciate that you want answers to these questions. Some of these questions should probably go through our legal counsel and not be shared in an open meeting. We all have not had that discussion with legal counsel to know what we are able to and not able to share in order to protect the township.
What does it have with the motion of stripping? Okay, I'll read my motion again so you understand it. The motion is, yes, I'm going to do the motion. You, we don't have a debate. My motion is that... Sorry. The motion is, is that better? Can you hear it? She's asking for your, but it's not close enough. That usually helps. Okay, I'll read the motion one more time so it's understood. The motion is that the agenda will be stripped of the issues that I've listed, not to not vote on them, but to move them to our next meeting, which is Monday, August 21st. So again, all of these will be voted on. They're just going to be voted on in two weeks, not today.
Nice, I second that.
So take a roll call vote.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, no. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Of course, if we didn't see that coming.
Okay.
And I would like to make some amendments to the menu here. I would like to clarify, have a short discussion on the duties of the Board of Trustees. Simple.
Where would you like it put?
I'd like to be as soon as we can on the menu, on the order of business. And the second thing is safety in the workplace. And the second thing is, safety in the workplace.
Perhaps.
I don't need to go into details now, if we can have a discussion on it.
So you want under 13A?
Yeah.
Items for discussion.
Yeah, items for discussion. That, my hope is, we can avoid a huge outpayment of money from the taxpayers, and make this, where do we want to put it? I don't care where it goes. Early on would be my preference.
So that would be A.
So.
You would put it small A?
Yeah.
Public safety, what was the other one?
The duties of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, duties.
What are we supposed to do, and how can we make this fiasco that happened in our office, protect us against this kind of thing happening to our township and our taxpayers?
Okay, so that means that 13, unfinished business, large A, small A would be public safety, small B would be duties of the board, C would be absent voting counting, and D would be township staffing. Does that sound right? Does that sound right?
Cheryl, can you repeat what your motion was, please?
My amendments would be, what are the duties of the Board of Trustees, and to, safety in our workplace, here in our offices, how can we prevent the fiasco that happened in expense to the taxpayers?
And add them where?
Add them wherever we want.
I missed that part.
Okay, we can add them under, I guess it would be new business, wherever you guys think it would appropriately go. I mean, I'd like to do action on it, but we can't do that without discussion first, so.
So it's unfinished business?
Unfinished, well, started business.
It's new business, so.
Oh, all right.
Right, was that right? New business? Items for discussion, I.
All right, so you're talking 14, then, new business?
Well, unfinished, yes, I guess it would be new business. Items for introduction, discussion, I want discussion on it, definitely.
Okay, so, you're, you're looking at A? You want it first, is that what you're saying?
14A is discussion.
14A would be discussion? Is that right? And then B, how do I have that? Would be office safety, or township safety?
Workplace safety.
Workplace, okay. Let me make sure I got that right. So the motion, just so we've all understood it, the motion is to add to 14B, oh, that's not right, that's, well, is it items for action?
You can't do an action.
I can't go there, we have to go for it, but I want discussion on it, definitely.
Okay, so it would be A, items for introduction and discussion. A and B. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, the motion is to add to the agenda, 14, new business, A, introduction of, or items of introduction and discussion, A being?
Yep.
Discussion on duties of the Board of Trustees. Okay, duties.
And work, workplace safety.
Board of Trustees, and then B would be under items for introduction and discussion, workplace safety?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody, did I say that right? Yes, yes trustee.
I'd like to, I'd like to add to your amendment.
Could you speak into the mic, please, down?
Sorry, Judy. The construction estimate that we have got from the county, and it is time, they would like us, as quick as we could, let them know.
Construction, what?
Gary Lane, Timothy, and, and Drive. I told you I would bring you this back to you guys, as soon as the audit was done.
Yep. So we're.
And it'll be $340,104.35.
Do we have that?
And I, move, we take it out of ARPA funds.
Oh, you want these out of ARPA funds?
That's one of the main things that, when they give us the money, said it could be used for.
So this is one of the suggestions? We have a list of ARPA fund suggestions?
No.
You're asking?
I need this from the, from the county.
Okay, so this is in stone?
This is in stone.
Okay.
It could be less, sometimes, depends how things go. Hawk Hollow was a little higher, because they had a sinkhole over there, and they had to put $14,000 into that.
No, I understand that. My understanding was that, when you said ARPA funds, my understanding was, we were going to get a list from all of our committees and others.
Yeah, we'll be coming.
Their wish list, so to speak.
Yeah.
Because of the dollars being spent. So this one is a given, this is, this check will be written under the ARPA funds, for whatever cost it, yes, if it's passed, okay?
If not, we can take it out of general fund.
Or general fund. Huh. Okay. Nope, thank you.
Where do you want it though?
Well, wherever you want it.
Oh, I'd like to put it under 13BD.
13. B is in boy, items for action?
D.
D.
Yeah, B, and at the bottom, D.
Construction estimate. Okay. Now, this other piece that we were handed, is this yours, Brenda?
Yeah.
Okay, is that something you want to add to the agenda?
No.
Okay, this is, this is just information.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So you're not a separate, you're not, you're not a separate motion? This is with trustee?
Oh, do we want to just lump them together?
We're doing the.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it will be later on, but that puts it on the agenda.
So it is a separate.
That's what we're doing.
We got to vote on mine first, though, right?
No, you can put them all together.
We're accepting his amendment, along with yours.
With mine, put them together, is what you're saying.
To, to accept whether or not we approve of the agenda.
Okay.
I'm not changing yours.
Right, gotcha.
I'm just adding to it.
Okay.
So now there's one amendment, with two issues on it, for the agenda.
Three.
Nope, they said no, I'm lying, so.
Three, mine two and his one, so we got three.
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it that way.
Yeah, okay, what the heck?
So you're supporting it? You're supporting her?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Fueens Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda is proved as amended. And that would have been, what vote? Six, one?
Patience.
Yeah, okay. Okay, just so you know it, all right. Item four now, for those that are following, a disclosure of conflict of interest, doesn't appear to be. Public statement one, and again, until it's changed, it's three, there's a hand going up, I appreciate that. And this is for.
Boy, that was an ordeal, getting an agenda.
Current agenda items.
Well, current agenda items now contains Board Member duties, trustee, Board of Trustee So I'm going to address that. And, now we've got a board in upper management, it's kind of hard to decide whether or not they're, they're, they fall under the Peter Principle, or the Dunings and Cruder issue. Ryan will tell you what that means later. Anyway, what I brought up here is, you guys have responsibility. You need to restore Marie Howe back to her office. You need to restore her authority that you took away. And, right here is this thing that blew you guys out of the water. I've got more copies of this, if anybody would like it, but this is an email that Ryan Fueens Bliss sent to all the board members at the time, one was Jason Amerigi. And it's basically trying to put, Jennifer wasn't on there at the time, and neither was Cheryl, but, but Ryan tried to drive Cheryl into this a couple months ago. And, it exposes the whole thing. This, this wasn't about workplace safety, this wasn't about somebody getting hit, you knew that didn't happen. You just frickin' knew it. Because first of all, she lied, she said she's been hit numerous times, and you guys went ahead with it, and you, and possibly you, decided to run with it, as a way of getting Marie out of this office. We can't unelect her, we can't recall her, she hasn't done anything, anything wrong. So you made up something. We have testimony from Jennifer that was different from what she told the police officer, than what she said in court, and it didn't even match the other person who was testifying against her. And right here, it states, Ryan Fueens Bliss said, "I asked Karen to connect me with the township attorneys after I read April's email."
Your three minutes, three minutes are up.
No way. Well, my point is, can I make my point real quick? Sure. My point is, if this was about workplace safety, you wouldn't be kicking and screaming so hard to keep Marie out of the office. You got what you wanted, and you don't have any, any idea, or any plan on how to fix your screw-up. That proves you're guilty of this conspiracy, that's even further proof of it, just like we knew all along. And I told you all along, you're getting bad information from your lawyers, everything I told you has come true, and you want to have more information to the lawyers.
Thank you.
Okay, my three minutes.
Nope, thank you, Rick.
I want to attempt to pick up where Rick was cut off at. I'm reading this email from Ryan, "I asked Lizzie what our options are." Lizzie being our township attorney. Number one, encourage April to make a complaint to law enforcement on her, her on behalf. Authorize Karen to make a complaint. You guys need to read this email. Ryan led the charge, he led the witch hunt. I almost feel sorry for the gal who fell victim to making the complaint. My question is, Karen, as HR Director, why didn't you take care of this problem? If you had have thought that it was a problem, if she was being assaulted, why didn't you as HR? Please, I'm trying to speak. No, Madam Supervisor, I can't hear you, if we take this vote, I'm sorry. So start my timer.
You need, apparently you need to pull the microphone closer.
No, they were talking.
Oh, is that what you're doing?
Karen is HR, if you have a complaint, if someone is being assaulted in the office, it's your duty to take care of that complaint. I have to speculate that either you didn't get a complaint, you didn't think it was legitimate, or you just did not do your job, and follow up on it. I don't know, I don't know the answers to that. But Fueens Bliss was more than willing to do your job for you, and you gave him, he says, you gave him the authority to go directly to the attorneys and do that.
I never saw it.
I think that each and every one of you sitting here need to analyze what you've done, and what you're not doing. Marie deserves to be back in this office, she needs her office back, I heard a rumor you gave it to another employee, which is pretty disrespectful in itself. You need to get things back on track, and you need to try to redeem yourselves a little bit. Ryan, you don't stand a chance of redeeming yourself. You have a question for Lizzie, if she could answer this? We have always been accustomed to, when we go to committee of the whole, is when the audience gets a chance to speak. You just said that is not what it is, could you share with the board at some point, what terminology they need to use, if they want to have a committee of the whole, open conversation, what the exact term is that needs to be used? We have always used committee of the whole.
I understand the ask, I work with the board, if that's a question presented among the many that have been presented, we will serve either of those.
I can't hear you, and not at the podium, if you'd like to speak, it's going to be open, you can come on up anytime you want, speaking from the audience is not really where I expect to hear a response from an attorney, that we're paying to be here, to represent us.
You can have a seat right up there, actually.
For our old attorney.
Again, I'm Terry Wood, and I live on Outer Drive. I am not sure who advised you guys, and I don't really care, but she should be reinstated with all of the rights of her position. We voted her in, the same as we did you guys, for you guys to think that you can change everything. I don't know where that comes from in your brain, I honestly don't. You take and you shift your responsibilities of what your job is, when we voted you in, to Karen, and you give her a sizable paycheck, in order to cover for you. You guys are a bunch of lazy no-goods, and that's my opinion.
It's kind of a tough act to follow. Meg Ritchie, Outer Drive, can you hear me okay? Honestly, it is hard to know where to begin. There has been so much going on, and once you go down the rabbit hole of just how badly this is, is becoming. Actually, you, you had a chance this evening, to go ahead and, maybe the terminology was incorrect, but you, you had an option to have a conversation with the audience, with questions and answers, a dialogue, a back and forth. And, one, two, three, four, five, I missed you. Five voted against it, two voted for. Maybe. I don't know how you plan on moving forward. So many bad things have happened, we've had people lying on police reports, we've had, I, I can't even go down the list, because once I start going out, then I'll start branching off into all different directions. But I think you all understand what I'm saying. You are not upholding your duties, you were elected, Jennifer not yet, but you were all elected to be the voice of your community. You're not doing that. And not only are you not doing it, but you're trying to tail people down, that have the best interest of our community at heart. You're trying to do the right thing. It may not be the way you do it, but try. Because what I've seen during this meeting, and the special meeting, before this meeting, there, there's no respect going on here. Oh, okay, do, do me another time, because I had, I had a couple responses of people that wanted me to read for them, because they cannot be available, so if you. So if you restart the clock again for me? And I'll be speaking for Mary Bouchard, who sent me a note because she wouldn't be able to be here tonight. Mary Bouchard, I don't know where her address is. She says, "I am not sure why it, the restoration of duties to supervisor was not put on the agenda when it was requested. This is an elephant. I don't think Bath can afford to look around it. Whether or not we agree with anything that has transpired over the past year, I think the reasons applied to set up these restrictions no longer apply. End of story. I think a discussion regarding supervisors' office space should be addressed as well. That was taken away at the same time, I believe. If this is not addressed, the public should know why." And she asks, "Timing, logistics, cowardice, resignations? Please do not entertain adjournment at 9:00 PM. Please consider moving mandatory adjournment time to midnight if necessary." Thank you. And again, that was Mary Bouchard. And I, I did get some other responses, but I cannot repeat them. Thank you, all of them.
All right, we're still on public statement.
Good evening. My name is Jim Church. I'm a sixty-year resident. I wasn't born here, but I was fortunate to marry a seventh-generation descendant of Silas Rhodes, who gave Bath Township its name. My grandchildren are ninth-generation residents. I hope you'll forgive me, but I grew up in D-Web. My remarks might seem repetitive, but I do bring a different perspective than those who've already spoken. I attended the trial. And it was an education. Education in chaos. Not only did the state's witnesses not collaborate each other's statements, but the video, much-talked-about video, didn't collaborate their statements either. The whole thing was a farce. And I'm grateful that Judge Clarizio is on the bench up there. I had never seen him in action from that perspective, but I was pleased with what I saw. So I'm not here to discuss what's on the agenda. I'm here to discuss what isn't. Number one, and we've heard this before, reinstatement of Marie needs to happen, and soon. Second, a unanimous resolution of apology for the whole thing getting passed this board. And number three, reimbursement of legal fees. I'd love to see what Jeffrey Feiger could do to this. But if you voluntarily do it, I have a feeling that you can get out of it for just the actual expenses, not punitive expenses that somebody like Jeffrey Feiger is going to shake out of you. We couldn't afford that. It had up to hundreds of thousands of extra dollars, which it shouldn't have to. So anyway, that's all I have to say. And I hope you'll do the right thing, but I'm not moving my breath.
Thank you, Mr. Church.
I am Kenny Church. I am the son of the seventh generation. I'm the eighth generation Bath resident. I forget the date. The twenty-fifth was the trial. Later that evening, after I learned Supervisor Howe was found not guilty, I sent an email to everyone on the board and also to Superintendent Hill de Brant. And I was asking, I asked several questions. One of them was, would it be on the agenda to reinstate her so she can get back to her office? Another one was, if it's not on the agenda, why? And to the board members, would you make the motion for second to have it added to the agenda? And if it gets added, will you be in favor of it? Only one person, Trustee Kellerman, responded to me. It wasn't the affirmative. Didn't answer all the questions, but it was in the affirmative. But you still didn't do it tonight. Nobody stepped up and said, "Hey, this has been adjudicated. Put our supervisor back in the office."
I got it on the agenda, sir.
Well, to put it back in there? I don't think you did, ma'am. You, you were talking about it.
It's on there.
Is it on the agenda to?
Office security, you're damn straight it is.
Well.
That's why.
Okay, but it's for discussion, not for action. Should have been for action.
You can't, you've got to go through discussion first. I'm sorry if my moderator. But you have to.
This is, this is old business. This has already been discussed, and it's been adjudicated. So not guilty means not guilty. You know, you can have your opinion on guilt or innocence, but the judge said not guilty, which means Supervisor goes back to her office. And frankly, Madam Supervisor, I'd say go. I'd say screw the board. They don't have any authority to keep you out of that office any longer. And what's going to happen if they call the cops on you again? There'll be an uprising.
That's true.
And.
That's true.
It won't be pretty. I mean, you think this is bad, for us to come up here and holler at you and to mention, but not repeat, some of the things that have been said? If you think that's bad, seriously, physically try to keep her out of her office. I, I would challenge you, Supervisor Howe, to, to just go. If, if they're too much of a coward to step up and say, "You can come back and complete the business of the township. I shouldn't have to drive to your house. You shouldn't have people coming to your house. This is where we do business, not your house. This is where we do business." And for them to take that away from you? I'm not going to speak to that because that's, that was a thing then. But it's been adjudicated, and it should be done. If it wasn't in the original motion, to be done when it was adjudicated, it should have been there now. Thank you.
Judy Gardi, I'm not exactly certain what was taken off the agenda, so I just ask a question. Is thirteen, oh, action item thirteen?
A, it's on there. It's still on there, Judy.
Thirteen B, item A, senior center proposal still on the agenda?
Yep.
It is? Okay, so I have two questions. One, did I hear you correctly, Al, in asking for that $300,000 to come out of ARPA funds to pave Anne Drive and Gary Lane?
That's why I spoke in the mic for you.
Beg your pardon?
That's why I spoke in the mic for you.
Okay, so my reaction to that is, the community and many, many committees that work for the board have turned in suggestions to you for ARPA funding for you to consider. Was that on the list? There was a deadline for that. We all had to meet that. Was that on the?
This, this has a deadline too, Judy.
Beg your pardon?
This has a deadline. This is your roads, the roads you drive on.
I understand that, Al. That's not my question.
Well, that's my point.
Right. No, my question is.
We're trying to make this a good township.
Well, I understand that completely.
And a place of fire and roads and sidewalks mean a lot.
Al, settle down.
No, I understand that completely, Al, and I appreciate that. I'm just asking a question regarding the ARPA funding and the list that was brought to you or that, I don't know, Karen, has it come to them yet?
It has not.
The community and board requests for ARPA funding?
It has not, but I do have them all. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And was that on the list?
It is not.
Uh-huh, so it didn't make the deadline. Thank you. Secondly, on the senior center proposal. We have discussed the senior center with you for a year now. I think the most important thing that I can say right now is that, and Al, I know you'll agree with this. The senior center is the second home for so many of our seniors. That's where they find their second families. They just want to be able to go into a building that we have available to them and be together and strengthen the community and the friendships that they have and have organized activities and things to do to help them pass their elder years. And I really don't see why, if the question might be or come up, how that could be staffed Tuesday and Wednesday. It's activities, if you looked at the plan that Sherry provided. And actually, those could be coordinated by the recreation director. It's quite a nice fit for her to do fitness and enrichment, and we're already paying her. And it might seem that that might be something that we could easily add to her responsibilities that would make it more, provide, maybe give you a feeling of less liability if it weren't a volunteer who were staffing the senior center. Those additional hours, it was someone that's already on your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Is there anybody else for public statement one? Seeing none. And I have to thank those for support. Consent agenda, item seven.
Item six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed six for anyone, but I didn't see them. State, county, federal? Maybe that's why I skipped it. Sorry. All right, there are none. Item seven, consent agenda.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, approval of the minutes from our board meeting July seventeenth.
Yes, I have one.
In our special meeting.
One, oh, not that one, the other one. Go ahead.
She has two.
Oh, the second meeting. It shows you and me being absent, Marie.
Yeah.
You didn't realize that?
No, I didn't realize I was absent, but.
Yeah, it shows that you and me were absent.
Yeah.
And I got to find it.
I think that probably was a typo.
Yeah, I'm sure it was.
Yeah.
I just tried to have it.
It's on there. No, I'm glad you brought it up.
Oh, yep, I see it.
Yep. And that would have been for what date?
July seventeenth, the regular meeting. So I'll make the amendments.
So B is amended. Is that correct? Is that what you've got?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
It also shows Joe being absent.
That was a meeting before.
No, he was.
Yeah, on page two, but it also lists him as present.
Oh.
I wasn't absent.
I think there's some confusion. Trustee Kellerman and I are looking at the present and the absent. Is it located somewhere other than the top of the document?
Because ours are both here.
Oh, okay.
Mine doesn't show anybody absent on mic.
Mine doesn't either.
All right, so approval of the minutes, they're in question. As to the location, who's there, who isn't there, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I will do the amendments. Okay, so both of them need to be amended? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second. Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes, will you come back to us a minute?
They won't come back.
I'm not supposed to answer, but it's okay.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine, which is the approval of vouchers for August seventh. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for August seventh.
Second.
All right, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No, I haven't turned them in yet. No.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item ten, which is your Treasury report, doesn't appear to be one. And eleven for your committee appointments. And we have a resignation for Kathy Wood, which is effective July tenth. Now, the interesting part of Kathy Wood, I found it on my doorstep, three o'clock in the morning. Mr. Kitty wanted out, so guess what? So there it was. So this says July tenth. I'm not quite sure, this is August seventh. Is there any? So my first recognition, sorry about that, is for Kathy Wood, August tenth. And a resignation from Heath Lance, that I did get. So are we going to accept those? Do we need a call on that, or do we just put it on the agenda? As long as you appoint them, I assume you need a roll call to unappoint them.
No, we just have to accept their resignation.
Okay. And we have a recommendation for Deb Johnson to serve on the senior advisory board. And her term expires December thirty-one of 2023. She's replacing Kathy. Sorry. No, no. They said no. That's what he said.
We're not going to vote on that one.
Nope, says roll call. Nope, all you need to do is accept them.
I didn't say that. I said you have to accept them.
The resignation.
Oh, I thought all you had to do.
You have to accept their resignation.
Well, that's what I thought, but when you said no, that's, okay. I got you. Roll call for both of them.
Anybody can make a motion?
Ryan's scared to say something now.
You're never scared. All right, so we have a second for the motion?
Ryan's got a question.
We've got a motion on the floor. Do you have some?
No, we don't.
Yes, we do. Oh, I thought somebody, I thought he made the motion. All right, so no one's made a motion. There's no second. Okay. That's not quite how I understood it. Are you making the motion?
I'd like to, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the resignations of Kathy Wood as of July tenth. And is that Heinz?
Heath.
Heath, thank you. Lance, effective July twenty-first, 2023.
Second. Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, for committee appointments, we have a recommendation for Deb Johnson to the senior center advisory board for a term that expires December thirty-one of twenty-three. She'll be replacing Kathy Aldridge.
I would like to have us hold off on this one until we can get an answer on the, uh, what happened at the senior advisory board meeting and why the last two have been not recorded.
I'm not sure I'm understanding why you would hold this.
The last two meetings, right, were not even recorded. They were over at the senior center.
No, I was going to say those were.
What did you say?
Didn't, you said that you wanted your senior center, uh, their meeting over there, and that you wouldn't be recorded. Is that right?
No.
You did have it here?
It was made here.
You did have it here?
Yes.
Because you said you wasn't going to.
No, it was made here.
Okay.
The question is whether we can have a meeting of the whole sitting around a table or whether or not we. or whether or not we can sit at the dais. We prefer, because we're a working committee, to sit as committee of the whole at a table, and the administration won't let us sit at a table. They require us to sit at the dais. So that's been the contention between us. It's just where we sit.
Okay. But also, the meeting, when you guys were discussing the money at the Senior Center for the saving, when you were trying to, you had your show?
We've never had a meeting at the Senior Center.
No, you had it here.
We've had meetings here.
And it was, and it was recorded, and I've listened to it. I'm kinda disturbed on what I hear.
What does that have to do with Kathy Wood?
Not a thing. We're on Deb Johnson now, putting somebody else on.
Deb Johnson, get along.
Huh? All you gotta do is go on our internet, and you can listen to the whole thing.
We were there, Al.
Yes, I know you were, that's why I said, I had listened to it, too.
Al.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So we have a motion on recommendation of Deb Johnson for the senior services.
I didn't have a motion.
You're challenging it because you said that had something to do with the way the board's meeting, which doesn't...
Yeah, I guess I was wrong, because I understood they were gonna meet over there.
Yeah, but it doesn't have anything to do with the recommendation to the Advisory Board.
But I think putting another person on that board until we get straightened out the situation over there?
There's no straightening out. There's no straightening out.
Why don't you go and listen to the recording? I know you was there, and that's why I'm surprised you're...
Yeah, that's why I'm asking you what you're talking about.
All you gotta do is listen to the recording.
Yeah, we know all about those recordings.
And it's, and it's a shame.
Okay. So is there a second for that? I made the motion. I'll make the motion. For a recommendation for Deb Johnson to be on the Senior Services Advisory Board for a term that expires December 31 of 2023 this year. She's replacing Kathy Aldridge. Any questions? I need a second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, no?
Me?
Ms. Howe?
Supervisor Howe? Yes.
So what we're saying at this point is that we are not recommending Deb Johnson to the Senior Services Advisory Board, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. It's the board's decision, guys. One of many. All right, so we have a township committee reports. There appears to be none, and that would be item 12. So item 13 starts with unfinished business. I'll make sure I get this right. Hit you in the head with it. For items of discussion, A, and that's the safety. Is that correct?
I don't know what order we ended up with them in.
I have no idea. By the time we got done figuring this out, I was lost. Okay.
Start wherever you wish.
No, I thought you put hers.
Hers was 14.
Hers are on 14.
It's 14.
So we're on 13A.
So we're on 13A.
Absent voters.
For discussion and introduction, being A, absent voter county board establishment.
Okay. I just wanted to do an update on the absentee counting board and remind the board that we'll be setting up an absentee counting board precinct effective the first election of 2024. The board approved to, for me to purchase five tabulators, but doing more research, I really only need to purchase three tabulators, so that'll save about $10,000. Let's see. By creating an AAV counting board, this will help the board, the township election results get to the county in a more timely manner. Currently, the results get to the county anywhere between 2:00 and 5:30 in the morning, where if we have an AAV counting board, they'll get there much earlier. I think that's all I had to say. I just wanted to remind everybody what we were doing.
All right, item 13, unfinished business, B, small B, township staffing. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you. So back in April, I had communicated with the Board of Trustees that additional full-time positions may be necessary. As we look to expanding the requirements of the state, by the state of Michigan to include nine days of early voting, especially in 2024, which is a general election year for the presidency, and then in the interim midterm elections, we currently only have a full-time clerk and a full-time deputy clerk. We will be requesting a full-time assistant to the clerk to assist with the administration of elections in addition to other things, including training, registration and assistance of our voters, precinct management, records management, and it could include additional items such as Freedom of Information Act requests. We will also be trying to prepare for the retirement of our assessor, who is approximately three or so years out of retiring. At this time, we have no additional workers in her department to position ourselves to be in a place for, that knowledge to be in place for that replacement. So we would be looking to bring someone on board and be able to get them to a Level Three, which is the state equalized value, along with other factors. That requires a Level Three advanced assessing person in our township. It takes a minimum of three years to complete the necessary training certifications and field work experience. In addition, there is information that I included in the packet for an additional police officer from Police Chief Gary Smith, and his need for one more full-time officer position. I won't go through his entire memo, but at this time, we are short-staffed due to a leave of absence, in addition to having two people currently in, one that's gonna go through the academy and one that's in full-time training at this time. Are there questions?
Nope, please, go ahead. I'll wait.
I read this over. I think this was really helpful for us to understand what's happening in the township. I wondered, though, if the level for the assistant to the clerk may be too small. As I read over the description, those are pretty high-level duties, important duties, high, high-risk is what we would call them in my office. It seems like maybe an assistant isn't the right level, that you might want somebody with perhaps more training or more education or more experience. I know that would cost us more, but when you're talking about elections, I think we can't, you know, I think money is well-invested to make sure we have secure elections. So just a thought as you're working through the process for that.
Thank you.
Okay. We looked at varying positions around the area, Delta Township, Meridian Township. Additional people in the, in the staffing of those departments have similar job titles and are similar job responsibilities, so we will keep that in mind definitely as we're looking around, but that tends to be the, I think, what they call the third person that sits on the team. And it may be that we call it an elections something, but I see where you're going.
Thank you.
Oh, I was gonna take a turn. You got a second question?
Yes. The other question I had or comment on the chief's memo, which was also incredibly helpful, that second-to-last paragraph, he talks about the mental health crisis that folks are facing in the community and that increased hostility towards officers and being called to take care of mental health calls. I'm wondering if, and I'm asking you because the chief isn't here, but something you all have considered is, is there a non-police option that the township should consider for those cases that would free police up to do, which is also happening in increase in felony crime in the township?
So the addition that we've seen in other agencies such as East Lansing is that those members typically accompany a current officer.
Okay.
So already having a staffing shortage, having that person, that they're not generally allowed to respond to calls on their own. So it would require a police officer to attend a call with them. It is definitely something that I think we should keep in mind, because I do think that there's a growing need in this community for mental health services and how they're handled. I mean, currently, right now, we're taking people to Sparrow, and, and within a half an hour to an hour, they're, they're free to leave on their own volition. So I do think it's important how we approach mental health in the community, but I don't know that that's the answer to the current problem.
Perhaps there's a proactive piece before it escalates to the police that, and I'm making no suggestions, just trying to think out loud, having social workers or mental health crisis workers having some programming out of the township to try to prevent it from getting to the point that police are called, that could also be an option for you all to consider. Again, it's more staffing and more money, but clearly, our community is in crisis, and I think it's well-placed money to invest in them.
My turn, please. Okay. Where do I start? I read this with great interest, like everybody else did, and it's not anything that has to do with reflection necessarily on our clerk. However, it is a reflection on the township. We're talking at least three, if not four, new employees. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Which means retirement, which means benefits. Okay? I understand that. So the cost issue has to be brought in. An assistant to the clerk, I had to question that, there are three other people in the office that work that the clerk has used, which rightfully so, on other issues. Why then do we need an assistant to an assistant?
So the current people that work in the office, the, there are limitations as to what the, let's say township treasurer, the deputy treasurer can do.
Well, it's deputy treasurer and then your two assistants. You have your deputy clerk and then...
Correct. Well, the other person is to be in my department, and the only current thing that's happening for the superintendent's department is payroll. So that person is actually working most of the time for the clerk, even though she's supposed to be in my department.
Right. No, I understand that. So you have at least three other people besides...
And they're not keeping up with...
Assistant to the assistant.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, because that's, that's what I'm questioning. Do we need another township employee to do that?
In my estimation, yes, we do.
Okay. Okay. Now, when you say assessing assessment, assistant, that one puts a smile on my face, because I've kind of been watching this. Beth does a great job. However, in doing her job, she didn't come in at any level, and we as taxpayers out there paid for her education, paid for her...
Correct.
Assessment to be here. Then she, of course, became a third level. So I guess I'm thinking out loud, the same as, you know, trustee Bliss has been doing, why don't we just put her on contract and bring someone in that we look for the next two and a half years that already has a Level Three? I mean, she already does three other assisting jobs for that in, in the county, so she actually has four jobs that she does, but we support the retirement, we support the benefits, and et cetera, and the other three have parcels that they number that she assesses. So when I look for an assistant for our assessor, I kind of question that. Am I way off base?
I, I would hope in the process of planning for her retirement that we would be able to secure someone that has a higher knowledge than just coming in blank, but I don't know what else to say.
No, that's one way to put it.
But the, I mean, really, the fact is, is that people, once they obtain certifications, often go to other municipalities. So our hope would be, much like we might do with police, in order to retain people, is that we would have that training for that person and then require them, if possible, to work for us for a certain amount of time.
In my travels throughout Clinton County, most of the people who have your three level that you speak to are doing exactly what ours does, and that is to go into other communities and assess without being members. They already set contracts. They don't hire them. So I guess I'm wondering, this would be a good time to look at that seriously, to look at a contract for anyone else who's coming in. I don't see to pay another employee for two and a half years of working here with our assessor if we can, which I think we can, contract a third level individual, which is what we need, according to what we've always been told, the third level that we need in this township. So again, that's another employee that I'm not sure is a necessary point at this time.
Okay. You're proposing that the assistant be contracted?
Oh, no, I'm opposing, well, I've always said our assessor should be contracted, but no, I don't think she needs an assistant. I don't think that's what's needed. You have three other townships that she already assesses, and she does find work, and she works hard. I'm not saying that.
Okay.
What I am saying is that an assistant to an assistant, I mean, assistant to our assessor is an unnecessary move at this time financially.
So how would you, how would you plan for her to retire?
She's got two and a half years to go. We've got two and a half years to find someone to take her place if you want to hire them as an employee. If you don't, then you contract, and you have two and a half years to work on that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Because she's, she's doing work now.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have an assistant come in, I'm not sure I'm understanding why that's needed.
Okay.
Okay. As for the police officer, when you talk about that, as long as it has not been moved, I don't see a time-sensitive piece with this, but I certainly do agree with him. Although, you're talking two officers, he's talking one, or according to this, you're talking one, is he talking two?
We're talking in addition to the other two that were just hired. We currently have people that are working extensive overtime and are being, are burned out at this point.
Yeah, I hear that. Yeah, I know, I understand all of that. I've read it, I've lived it, I understand what you're saying. But again, which is it? Do we have one new employee, or do we have two?
It's one new for the police department he's asking for.
Okay. He's asking for one, and you've stated we already have hired two new ones, so that's actually three.
This would be in addition to...
In addition to the two, so there's actually three.
But the two get us to bare minimum staffing.
Okay. I have no issue with that. I understand the staffing of cops. That works. But what I'm trying to figure out is, what you're saying here is that we need one, one more full-time, so that equals three full-time that we've had in '23.
That those other two are replacing positions that were already...
No, no, you're not here. What I'm saying is, in 19, in 2023, we have three new full-time employees, including this one.
I, I don't understand what you're saying.
Okay. You said that there were two new ones that were just hired to replace, so we have two new employees.
Correct, but they're already filling created positions.
That's, that's okay. You still have two new employees. Whether they're filling them or not, doesn't make any difference.
It does. We're asking for an additional...
Well, two have gone, two are coming on.
To what is already authorized for the department.
And one more is coming on, is what you're asking. So that means in 2023, we have three new employees.
But the number's only increased by one.
I didn't, I understand that, but we have three new employees in 2023.
I understand that part.
Okay. Then that's a yes.
Okay.
Okay. Right?
Marie.
That's a yes, right?
They are replacing officers that have left us. So they are not, they are new to the job?
Thank you. That's what I'm, thank you.
Correct. They are new to the job.
Okay.
Marie.
So we have a total of three new employees to the job, is what we're asking. I understand.
No, I'm only asking you for one.
No, Gary's asking, he said we need one more full-time. So we have two that have replaced two, and now we have one.
I don't know how to answer your question. They are new to the job, but they are already in approved positions.
We're adding one.
We're asking for an additional position for road patrol.
Which makes three in 2023.
Okay, no, I'm not agreeing with that, so...
I understand, I understand that completely, I hear you. But recognition is done, whether or not I decide to recognize.
Sure, your dates are off, is what I'm trying to say. It's not 2023.
It's 2023.
In the memo, he says it's 2024, that's all I'm trying to tell you.
I understand, I read the memo, I've read 2023.
So there are no new employees in 2023.
All right, do I need to use the gavel again?
You may, if you'd like, I'm just trying to help you understand the timeframe.
It's all right, you're out of order.
I hear you.
All right, so now, this is an item for action. Do I finally get to add to our meeting?
It'd be nice to be able to hear each other, too.
That would be, all right, so what we have, where are we at? The Fishtown Township Staffing, okay. That is for introduction, so now we're on B, which is Item For Action, Senior Center.
Senior Center proposal that we all got the handout here, and we really added it up, that we're not going to be that much more expensive. Karen asked me the question, do we, I think to start, not have the cooks there, just the three days, maybe we can bring in sandwiches, donuts in the morning, whatever's easy, whatever the people seem to want as we go along. But I think it's terribly important that they have a place to go, especially when we have this pollution that we had recently, where Detroit was the dirtiest city in the world, and Lansing was right behind Detroit, and we closed our center, and I was so upset by that, that it was routine cleaning and a broken refrigerator. And a lot of people, oh, they could go somewhere else, the library, or a church, or whatever, but we're looking at people that have friends there, they want to be there, and I think it's really a service to this community that I would really like to see happen, that we are open, we have to add nine hours to Jenna's schedule, that COVID is over, that, and I also was mentioned, somebody mentioned to me, card keys, so we all know when people that work by the hour are there, which I think is a great idea. And maybe not starting if it looks busy and we get lots of people, we could order a pizza from the corner store if people want that that day, and they could pay for it, or they could bring their own, which they probably wouldn't do. But kind of play it by ear and let it grow as it goes on. Next year, we can put more in the budget. If it looks like we need more meals one or two days a week, we can grow with the times. But I'd like to see it open, the folks that have been there that I've met with want to see it open. So I would make that motion that we pass this and open our senior center to our seniors.
I second.
Can we have discussion?
Sure.
Okay. I have questions. So how are you going to pay for these lunches that you're recommending?
Well, there's, like I said, there's options. I could bring in donuts one day a week, whatever. We can have lunches that the people can pay for, just let it grow as we go.
So you haven't, okay, so there's no budget you haven't brought forth?
Yeah, we did, we had the program coordinator, we add nine hours to the schedule that she has to work on-site, and other current staff, we add additional 14 hours because we'd stay open. We're already open for lunch Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We can recruit and train volunteers, which are already township employees, which was discussed and missed before, that they're already employed by our township. Therefore, they're covered by insurance if they're on the committee.
They are?
That's what I understand.
I have a question. I would like a letter from my insurer to that effect. Because I don't know what the insurer would insure at this point in time, but they will give you a letter.
Right.
Okay, I have a question with that one. I have a question with your letter. How does your insurance, talking to one, maybe two people, reference, what, 50-some employees that we have? How would your cost equal that cost of as many employees?
This isn't a personal cost, I just want a letter from the insurance company that insures, the township.
Oh, okay, that's what you said, okay, you said your insurance, okay.
Our insurance, township insurance, whether, to understand for sure.
I just think that would be good business to know that.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, sure, it would be good business, but again, five days a week, so basically, what you're saying is this is not a good idea?
No, no, research.
I want a clarification on the insurance.
To make sure that what type of township employees?
Well, I understand that our committee members, we pay W-2s, we pay taxes, they pay taxes on what they get as committee members. So yes, let's look into it and ask our insurance company. Can I open the senior center myself as a trustee? Those are questions to...
We don't have time to ask those questions.
Yes, that's why I brought it here, let's look into all the, that would be the expense...
Well, this is Item For Action, so we have to take a vote on it. So what is your proposal?
Do you want to...
What is your option?
It's, well, the proposal's written here.
So the option, so...
I mean, I am not against more hours, but honestly, I think Monday, Wednesday, Friday, maybe we just change the hours that we're open, so they're open longer on just those days, and start there.
Like to see us, with this pollution, I'd love to see us open five days a week.
So what's the motion?
Make a motion to open it five days a week and figure out what we, our insurance will cover, what we can do. Can I go in there? Is that, am I covered as a trustee? So we have to find out answers to this, but I want to open it five days a week and figure out how we can do it.
Okay.
And your open date is September, correct?
Correct.
Did we put a date on there?
We should do. It was to start September. The proposal would start by the first of September and run through the end of the year.
Okay.
So we have time to get asked.
So what is the Item For Action? She's made a motion.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, I'm seconding it, so we get a real call vote.
Madam Chair.
Do you have a question?
I have a comment.
Well, then you'll have to wait.
No, I do not.
Yes, you do.
Robert's Rules of Order say that I am allowed to have discussion about any motion on the floor.
I'd like to hear him, can I hear him, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful to have a cost before we vote on it, so we know exactly what we're voting on, especially since we're in the middle of a budget year. This would be a change to fiscal year '23 that we haven't budgeted for. We could also concurrently build that into the budget for fiscal year '24, but since you're proposing the last four months of...
This is really not much money, compared to some of the other expenses that we've had recently.
Could you give me an estimate, then?
I really can't, because I don't even know the staffing salary, whatever, but just moving Jenna into, which I believe she's being paid, she should be in the senior center as the program coordinator. So we're not talking very many hours of additional people.
My understanding from our conversation at the last meeting was that you were going to meet with Karen and get the numbers for us.
I didn't, sorry.
I just think that would be helpful, even an estimate, honestly, sure, would be helpful, but if we don't have either of the...
Well, the first part is that...
It's probably not a good idea for us to vote when we don't know how much money we're talking about.
Did we vote on some other things we spent a lot of money on? I'm sorry to be rude, but $50,000 on attorney fees is a little...
I can't speak to that, I'm just saying, for this proposal, I thought that we were going to have some numbers today.
They're very minimal. I think we can afford to take care of our seniors, it's a minimal amount of money.
That's fair, but what is minimal?
Let's vote on it, let's vote on it.
What does minimal mean?
Any other question? I think we're...
Yes, I had a question.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
You've already had it answered.
Excuse me.
So now the motion...
No, I have not.
Yes, you have.
Madam Chair, I have the right to...
Do I?
You may, if you would...
I would.
I have the, I am not, I have the right...
I'm not going to argue with you.
Point of order. Madam Chair, Robert's Rules, page 357, indicates that any member must be recognized when they are allowed to do so.
He's already out of order, so...
Madam Chair, our rules say we go by Robert's Rules.
No, we don't, we go by Open Meetings Act.
May we talk to the attorney about that, then?
Oh, of course.
Thank you.
It's our attorney for the township. Here we go.
Here we go.
Good evening again, members of the board. This question has been raised a number of times. As I have explained previously, the board is authorized to take action under the Open Meetings Act, that is the source of your authority. Your board rules also say, if your rules do not speak to an issue, then you go by Robert's Rules. So if our board rules do not speak to this issue... Madam Supervisor, may I finish, and then I will be prepared for your question.
I haven't said anything.
I promise. Your board rules speak to requiring compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Your board rules, then, I don't have the copy in front of me, I will grab it and bring it back to the table if I like, it's the last item that indicates you are supplemented by Robert's Rules of Order.
All right, my understanding from what has been stated here, and that's why we're going over the board rules, is because board rules are first, open meetings second, Robert's is third. Now, that's how I understood, and everybody said, yes, that's true, that's how that works. So all I'm saying is, we've got a motion on the floor, we have a second, and I'd like a vote. And when, in fact, the issue was answered, and the trustee had plenty of time, and he asked and had the discussion, now it's time for the vote. So that's kind of where I'm at.
I think the reason I understood me to be called up here was to speak to this issue of point of order that was raised by trustee Feewins Bliss.
Okay.
Point of order is allowed as a request to have the chair reconsider and the group to discuss whether that will be continued. It is essentially an appeal of the gavel.
Thank you. And the appeal to the gavel says, it's time for the vote.
But that is not decided by the chair, Madam Supervisor. The appeal is decided by the whole. That's correct, sir.
No, you guys, you're telling me I can't gavel, and I'm telling you I am. So now we need a vote.
No, Madam Chair.
You want, go ahead.
Yes, Ryan, point of order. If you don't like your lawyer or attorney, then sue the township.
Go ahead.
I think we should try this for the three or four months left in the year.
Thank you.
That's the only way you're going to know how much it's going to cost. We're not talking about a big amount of money.
That's correct.
And I think that...
And we'll look into the attorneys.
Our seniors need a place to go.
Yeah, thank you. And we'll look into the insurance, we can do that, it's no, find out what, a little add-on, maybe we have to. I mean, like, I really don't know, if I went in there and opened it up, which I almost did when we had the pollution and the heat, I was so upset, and I drank a beer, so I couldn't go.
So now let's vote.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order that is on the floor. The board now needs to decide whether that is overturned or not. It's not for you to rule, it is for the board to rule.
All right, we've got a vote, we've got a second.
Madam Chair, I am calling a point of order.
Do I get to dismiss you from...
You do not, no.
Yes, I do. You're being rude.
I am not being rude, I'm using the rules that you put into place.
You can be evicted from the meeting. I just read it.
If that's what she chooses to do, that is what she chooses to do. I'm using the document that she continues to reference, the rules, our township attorney has told us how to follow them, I'm only following the rules that you demanded I follow at the beginning of the meeting.
And a motion has been made, a second's been done, and we're looking for...
And a point of order overrules that, a point of order is ruled on first.
I'm calling for the vote.
I already called a point of order.
Ryan, do we need to do this?
Yes, Marie, if you are going to use these rules, which I welcome, you have to follow the rules that are listed here.
I suggest, then, that you leave, and...
No. I'm not going to leave.
Thank you! We're going to take a vote, so you can vote however you want to do it.
No, you are going to follow the rules, Marie. This is a point of order.
Do we get to call a count?
You have said that these are the rules, I'm asking you to follow these rules.
And I'm asking you to stop being so belligerent.
I'm not being belligerent at all, I'm respectfully asking you to follow the rules that you have outlined, and I'm asking my fellow board members to allow me to speak. I have the right to speak at a board meeting.
I'm not going to argue with you anymore.
You are arguing with me.
No, I'm not.
This is the rules. If you can show me in this book where they're wrong, I'm happy to follow them, Marie, we've agreed to follow this.
Do you want me to do it? Because I will...
To do what?
I'll call the cops to tell them to get rid of you.
You are welcome to do that, Marie.
Thank you.
I'm asking you to follow the rules we've agreed to.
And I'm asking for a vote.
I understand, but the rules state that you need to rule on the point of order as a board. Our attorney has told us that that is what the law and our rules say.
I turned it off. I know, that's, he's going, that's...
Can we have a recess, then?
No, I would like to get done, it's eight o'clock, and we still have quite a bit to do. It's as simple as that. I already promised Al we'd be out of here, but that's not happening, so... Unless you're ready for a vote, it's...
I'm asking for a vote on my point of privilege, my point of order, excuse me, as outlined in our board rules.
Yes, I'd like to have someone removed from our meeting at Bath Township on Webster Road, is Webster Road, it would be, what, 1444, what the hell's our... 14480.
You would think with the trouble that you've already caused, that you'd back your bottom off.
Yes. My name is Marie Howe, H-O-W-E. I'm the supervisor from Bath Charter Township. I'm sorry, what? Oh, I'm using my cellphone, so it would be 898-0059. I'm sorry, what? Oh, just that he needs, one of our trustees is giving me some issues, and I've tried numerous times, so now he needs to be escorted out. Thank you. Nope, that's good. His name is Ryan Feewins Bliss. No, it's Ryan. Yes, Feewins Bliss. Yes, hyphenated. Correct. No. Thank you. All right, I know. Okay, that's taken care of. Now can we take the vote?
No, I'm asking for a ruling on the point of order, Madam Chair, per our rules.
She just ruled on it. No, that's your answer, Ryan. She said no, she ruled on your, on your point of order, she's ruled on your appeal.
Lizzie, can you come up and...
It's already taken care of, they're on their way.
Sorry, Brenda, what was the question?
So should we do the point of order, or should we do the motion?
So I understand the supervisor to have made her decision on the point of order request, the board has the right to appeal that, Mr. Feewins Bliss has the right to appeal that, and that it is a matter for the board to decide whether he is allowed to speak or not.
At this meeting?
At this very moment, that's entitled to happen. And if the board says his point of order was correct, he should be allowed to speak. He speaks, and then you're allowed to move on with your vote on the motion on the table regarding the senior services advisory, I'm sorry, the senior center.
Yeah, well, senior center proposal. I second it. Oh, no, he had an opinion.
It doesn't require a second, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you, I know. All right, they're on their way. So, board?
Can we vote on that?
We can't vote on anything until we decide on his appeal.
Can we vote on his appeal?
Yeah.
Let's vote, I make a motion, we vote on Ryan's appeal. Does that make sense?
To be able to speak.
I make a motion that he be quiet, and we vote on my motion.
No, you can't.
I make, I make a motion that he...
I kind of like that.
Madam Supervisor, to make it, if this helps at all, perhaps it would be either a motion to overrule the gavel, or to uphold the gavel.
I make a motion, we uphold the gavel.
I'll, I'll, no, I second.
Ms. Kellerman?
This man.
Yes.
Would you explain how, what a yes and no vote is going to mean now?
If I'm understanding, what her motion is, is that that is going to mean that we are not, or we are, we are overruling it?
I'm over, I'm ruling for you that he's not going to, we can go proceed to vote, uphold the gavel, and then we can proceed to vote on the senior center opening.
Yes, so, you got it?
So, that's my motion. That we can just vote on this bloody thing.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiewans Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, no. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Bensy?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to overturn the gavel of the chair.
No, the next- I would just like, like she says, I would like to vote as soon as we can on the senior center proposal. That's what started this whole thing. So, the motion? We're doing a third motion, and the third motion is to overrule the gavel.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, it's all, there, go right ahead.
I second.
Do you understand that one?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I figured you did.
You did very good.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Who is the second?
Jen was the second.
I want to hear what he has to say.
We're voting.
Mr. Fiewans Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
May I continue, Madam Chair?
They ruled.
Is that a yes?
They ruled.
I'm seeking your approval to continue.
Yes, I know you're seeking it, they ruled.
Yes.
So, they ruled.
May I speak?
They ruled.
I understand.
That you can do that.
Great, thank you. So, Sherry, what I was saying is, I would really appreciate some numbers, and you keep saying it's minimal, which I appreciate, and I imagine it's correct, but I think it's really helpful for us to be able to actually know the number, or even some guidelines around what minimal means to you, what minimal means to us. I think opening for more hours is a good idea, I'm incredibly happy to support that, but hopefully you've seen, whenever we vote on anything, I ask for numbers to make sure we're being transparent and honest with the voters. So, that's all I was trying to say. So, if we vote on this night, I'll be a no, but it's not because I don't want more hours, it's just I want the information before we make that vote. Thank you.
Well, I guess, one of the reasons we can't come up with numbers is we need to look into insurance. Can I open it? Can the committee members open it? They do pay taxes, et cetera, so those are some of the questions.
I think those are really reasonable questions, Sherry.
Jenna's hours, we're adding nine hours. If she doesn't want to work it, then we need to hire someone else, it's up to her. But, to pay her at home, we're going to take that away, be there, work there. So, those are questions we have to answer in order to do this. But, you know, and a lot of other things that went along this, with this won't cost anything, have a, we're talking about enlarging that center, which I see a reason to do that, but we're not even utilizing it at pre-COVID amount of time. We, and there, there is another part to this, is we were open five days a week, we were open more hours, so let's go back to that, we're post-COVID. That's what I can't understand, why, you want to know what it costs, we paid for it before, we were open.
Yeah, we budgeted for it. Again, I was one of the people who voted yes to expand to the five days.
We're talking two to three months, that would, we don't know exactly how many pennies it's going to cost, compared to what? Hell of a lot less than our attorneys being here at every meeting, for instance.
I think that's a fair comparison, but we knew what that number was beforehand.
Yep. Oh, I'll hunt down the numbers.
I think Karen can actually help you. I don't, I don't think you have to do it, Sherry. I, I think it's actually unreasonable to ask you to do it, I think our staff should be doing that.
Right, yeah, I agree, that would, that would.
So, I guess that's my request.
Okay.
Make an appointment.
Karen, give the numbers with her.
Give the numbers and talk to the attorneys.
Because I, I would offer that, if the board votes yes on this, it's my job to implement it using what has been laid out, so I would actually prefer that you not just run in and open it, that we would have that discussion.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
You know, I, I almost did, but I didn't. But, so, okay, so we'll look at the numbers, and we'll bring it back, I can make a motion that Karen looks into all these numbers that we pretty much proposed.
We got a motion on the floor and a second. We got a, we got a vote.
You've got, you've already got a motion on the floor.
I'd support that second motion, Sherry, if that's what you make after the first one.
Withdraw the motion, and then we'll make a-
Cheryl, just wait.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's up to you.
We just need more numbers, I, I get that. Exactly. Yep. There you go. Not even that, because we're not going to do the full meals, we're, we're proposing just, because that costs a lot of money, so. I know. It's, yeah, it is working, and unfortunately, this is, this is pre-COVID money, way less than it was pre-COVID, because we're not cooking five days a week. This is ridiculous that we can't just say, yes. It's, I can't fathom the reasons here, and this board, why there's a problem with this.
Sherry, I'm, I mean, I can only speak for myself, the problem isn't moral or ethical or even thematic, it's, as a government entity, we shouldn't be making decisions on spending money without knowing-
We made decisions to close for COVID. COVID's done, open it up.
I can't speak to that, I wasn't here at that time. I'm just trying to answer your question, why you can't fathom this is where I'm at, I'm trying to tell you that that's why. Again, I don't, I don't disagree with your underlying premise, but part of the frustration that I have had as a board member since my first term is, things do take time, things do have to go through processes.
It's been a year.
Well, this has been on the floor just now, so, I, I'm just saying, I share your frustration that township government can be slow, but it also helps protect the taxpayers to make sure we're investing the money.
Sometimes it does, yeah. And I wasn't even in on that discussion. So far.
Get back here. Get back here.
We still have more stuff to do.
Sorry for the interruption. Thank you guys for staying as long as you're staying, it's greatly appreciated with all this excitement going on. They'll be talking with you shortly.
Thank you.
So, that'll work. Lizzie made herself available, so our township attorney and her availability is also there. So, do we go on?
Yes.
Well, except, he's going to be removing you, where are we?
Cheryl, call your vote.
Call vote, okay. I didn't withdraw, no, I didn't withdraw, the motion's on the table.
No, it wasn't removed, she didn't remove it.
I did not remove it, my motion's on the table to open the senior center, and-
And that's what we're voting on.
And not even to pre-COVID level.
I think he's measuring for you, so that's not a public display, so.
Cheryl, this is what I have, so correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Okay?
Call your vote.
Open the town, I'm sorry, open the senior center to five days a week and figure out if township insurance is covered, effective September 1st.
For volunteers.
For volunteers, okay. Are you okay with the word?
And that would be the, I, so far, thinking the people who are already under hire, the, on the committee, senior citizens committee. Advisory board and the committee, and, or, or myself as a trustee, who, who's covered?
Your motion, your motion only reads, or should only read, that we are to accept or reject the senior center proposal. What happens with that, if I'm understanding what Joe is asking, in addition to other items that need to be followed through, will be followed through after, during the process till the end of the year. Is that correct?
Right, and then we can-
I, I would follow through, this isn't going to start till September 1st.
Right. So, there can be lots of-
We have time to do all of this before that.
Yeah. But to pass it for five days a week is something that the senior center needs to know now. This is time sensitive.
Yeah.
From their standpoint.
So, we just plan on it and, and get the numbers, figure out what insurance?
And all that will be done between now and the end of the year. Yes.
No, on the first.
So, what I would propose is that if this is adopted tonight, I would go through and follow through with those questions that you're asking, and then I would implement the proposal as put forth, to make that happen.
For the 2024, or 20, yeah, 2024 budget year?
No, from now until the end of Sept, to, from September 1st to the end of the year.
And then we can use it in the budget for next year and go forward with what, and learn, learn what we need, what we, whether we have a call for one more meal or not, or we can bring in donuts, whatever, we can be flexible and provide for our folks.
All right.
That's my wish.
I wish, just tell me exactly what you want the motion to be. And keep changing it, so I just want to make sure I'm getting it correct.
That's true, that's true. Yeah. Proposal to accept that we investigate all expenses and operating methods of the senior center open five days a week, that we are going to head in that direction with our intentions to open five days a week.
You got that motion? In other words, how about just put down the proposal for the Bath Senior Center to be open five days a week?
Yeah.
Beginning September 1st.
Yeah.
The 1st of September.
And then we can grow for next year.
So, does everybody understand the proposal?
Effective September 1st.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, clarification on that, that's all. Are you okay with that, Marie?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, no, that's, you should never apologize for wanting to be clear on what you're doing.
No, I apologize for being garbled. Okay.
Okay.
All right, it was second.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fiewans Bliss?
I'm sorry, I was out of the room, could you repeat the motion for me?
The Bath Senior Center to be open five days a week effective September 1st.
Correct.
No, thank you.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challenger? Yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm going to say no at this time.
So, what does that, leave us?
Passes.
Okay. So, it passed.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we are on items for action, outdoor emergency siren. B, B and B.
I have a question on that, I got to find it, hang on, the, the placement of the second one, there's two, hang on, I've lost it.
So, if I could, while you're looking, please, please proceed. The recommendation tonight is to us, for us to pursue locating ideal locations that would fit within the coverage, and then identify if we are able to secure those locations for the poles and the sirens, and then a proposal would be back, be brought back for you to vote on.
I have a big yard.
I, I hope that would work, so there's, as I listed here, there are things that go along with that. I do think that we can make this happen, and I think we can make it happen both in the northeast corner of our township as well as the northwest, because if you look at the map, the coverage map, there's a big gap in both of those areas.
I can't hear it either, and I'm in the far east and south.
Okay.
Just for-
Okay.
-future reference, I haven't heard it ever, even if I'm outside.
Okay.
Time frame.
Uh, I would try to bring this back in the next month.
So, that would be September, our first meeting, right?
Correct. So, I'm really asking for the, the opportunity to proceed with gathering the information so that I can bring it back to you.
Absolutely.
Oh, because of the holiday? The fifth. Sixth?
Well, this is an item for action, so it's just-
So, it would be the fifth.
Fifth.
Because, because-
The holiday, yeah.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, all right.
Madam Supervisor?
Just a second. So, what I'm saying on this, what I understood for this to come back, we have to vote on whether to accept or reject, but there's no cost, the cost is $28,000 per sirens. I have a pole which is being donated, so that needs to be subtracted from, and I don't see the dollar amount.
So, I'm not asking to implement this, I'm asking to go out and bring back all of this information for you, to proceed with implementing two new sirens in the township.
So, we're really talking spring of next year? You can't dig in the winter to put the poles, so we're looking, and you're saying two, and I asked for one.
I understand, but there's also a gap when you look at the map, not just on the northeast, but also on the northwest.
There's no indication here where they would be, so obviously-
So, that's what I'm asking you to do, is let us go through and find the locations, see if the people that own the locations are agreeable, if there's power available, and to bring you back a completed proposal.
So, you're saying, at this point, we don't know anything other than where our four are at?
Correct.
And so, what this is supposed to do is to authorize yourself-
And-
And staff, which means our-
Kevin.
Director, Kevin Douglas. Yep, to pursue the implementation of two outdoor, because he's found in his research that we need two, not one.
That's the recommendation. So, we will bring you back the details in order for you to approve-
So, where's his, does he have a written report?
I have a written report.
No. Does he have a written report?
No, he does not.
Okay, so, he's doing-
We spoke on the phone after he spoke with, I'm sorry, West Shore. Um, and this is what we put together. It's okay.
All right, so, what we're saying then is Kevin, who's doing the research, has no report, but you do.
He gave me a verbal report that I'm bringing to you tonight.
And this is the verbal report?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what I guess I'm saying, you want two on the east side and the west side, but there isn't even a guess to it, okay?
We have to secure those locations.
And you haven't talked to them, so that can be done by September, right?
I, I'm hoping, yes. That's what I'm, I'm saying, is like, we don't have locations where we can put the poles and the sirens, so that's what I'm asking-
I don't want this to take two years to do, or a year, I, I would like to see it done.
I'm agreeing to bring it back by September 5th.
Which would be the two people that you've talked to.
I'm sorry? The two, Kevin?
No, no, the two people who are willing to-
I don't have people at this time that are willing.
But you said you know on the east and west side, you will talk to them.
We are in need of locations.
Right, okay.
To.
So that's what I'm saying.
We would have to figure out with West Shore.
Right.
What would be the ideal location.
So what I'm saying then is in September, by September, you should have a pretty good location.
I should, and I probably would bring back an easement, because it'll be a utility easement. But I will have to identify those locations.
Right, by September.
Correct.
The 5th. Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to drive at. So by September 5th, we should have two locations. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
The red, these are the existing ones.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah, these are the existing. We have the existing ones.
That's pretty empty.
That's, yep. Those are the ones.
So that's an area, and I've got to find it, and I think there's power across the other.
Okay, so do we need a motion for that? We do, because this is an item for action. Yes.
May I ask a question?
You may ask her a question.
Karen, I see that the map is sort of truncated. The township actually goes further north than this. So I'm assuming there's no coverage at anywhere north of what we see here. That seems lacking as well.
We would work with. North, West Shore, North Shore. I'm sorry, I.
East Shore. No, West Shore.
To find the optimum coverage. They even say we need three. I know at this time that they've recommended we implement at least two.
Do you know historically if these have been located in the highest population zones? Is that how these were? I know it's probably long before you.
That's my understanding and.
It feels that way from the map.
The ability of being able to attach on to infrastructure and having utilities located nearby to feed power.
So you don't envision us buying land to place these on?
No.
Oh.
It would be an easement.
Farm land.
It would be an easement with a current owner to put a pole and a sign in there.
I'm in the upper right corner of that where there's zero.
But like, it goes even farther up here.
Much, yes. This is not a real accurate map of Bath.
Thank you.
But yes.
It's more of an accurate map of the coverage of what we currently have.
That's all it is.
You're correct.
It doesn't show what we don't have. It shows what we do have.
Correct.
And that's a serious problem from the standpoint. That's why so many questions. Okay, it looks like because it's an item for action, does someone else want to make the motion? Because I certainly can motion. Okay, I'll make the motion. I will give the authority. We, the board, gives the authority to the superintendent and staff.
Thank you.
To pursue the implementation of two instead of one new township emergency siren.
Second.
That's the motion.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's okay. Okay, we are still on items for action. This would be the Siegfried Crandall proposal of the audit services for years. We heard his audit at our last meeting on the 17th of July, and I think, if I'm understanding what this is, and the supervisor can let me know, superintendent can let me know, this is just an okay?
This is a proposal for them to conduct our audit services for 23, 24, and 25.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a question. Well, I thought the motion was already made.
Cheryl seconded it. Who made the motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
So Marie and Cheryl? Thank you.
Okay, my question with this, he doesn't produce a cost. Is that because it changes?
There is a cost in here.
Is there a cost?
Yeah.
Fee structure.
12.
You have it, I don't.
Page 12 of this.
Oh. There we are. Page 12. I read this thing. What did I miss?
Yeah, a fee structure.
That's what I missed.
Yep, $11,100, $11,300, and $11,500.
Good thing we've done all together. Between 23 and 11,000, which is what he charged this year.
Little bit more.
A little bit more than, I think this year it was like.
From 11,000?
I thought so.
She's saying it was 9100?
Was that what it was? I can't verify that.
Can't verify that? Okay. I'd have to go look at the records. It would be in the vouchers.
Did you do that?
It'd be in your vouchers.
My voucher for what?
Whenever the bill came.
No, I mean, what is it under?
Siegfried Crandall.
No, what is that under?
Should be under vouchers. The general.
The general fund? Okay.
Treasurer, contractual professional services.
Contractual services?
I'm not for sure when it was paid.
Okay, so in 24 is 11,300, for 25 is 11,500. But we don't know that for sure, what was paid in 23.
I don't know.
Madam Supervisor?
So we'll look to see what that is going to be. If you would check on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ryan down there.
I know. I heard, but I wasn't finished with what I was doing. Yes.
The other thing to note here is the $8,000, when we need a federal A133, which we will in 2023 when we spend the ARPA funds. So the 2023 will actually be 19,100.
Alright, now say that to me one more time, just so.
When you have $750,000 of expenses of federal funds in any given fiscal year, you require an A133 or a single audit.
Or a single audit.
So sort of hidden, I don't like how they sort of put it under here. It's not clear that we know we have all that ARPA funds. We know we have to spend it in the next year. So undoubtedly, that'll be an additional $8,000 for 23. I just wanted to point that out as we were talking about costs.
It's, so since it's been allocated as a revenue loss, we've already declared that it's, it has a use. So as we decide to spend it on different projects that have come to us and come before us, I don't know that that's the case, because we can spend the money in 24 and 25.
But the money spent in 24 and 25 has to be on things that we allocated in 24.
Correct.
We can actually spend through 26.
But we've, I've had an opinion from the accountants, and they have declared, because I've declared it as lost revenue, we've already said what we're going to do with it. Now you can allocate it to other projects.
My concern is the.
The single audit.
No, the loss, our books don't show lost revenue.
Correct. They do not.
So I think it's a hard, I mean, it's, I doubt someone will call us on that or come at us, but that would be my only concern. If they looked at the books, our revenue's actually gone up during the pandemic. So if anyone wanted to ask the question, we may not be able to defend it. But you run the books. I don't know that as well as you do. I'm just throwing the question out there.
This, I'm just offering that that was from our auditor.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, our accountant, not our auditor.
Did you ask him that question?
Yes, because there is revenue shared funding from the state that is, if you don't have a plan in place by the end of the year, you don't receive an additional 1% of your revenue sharing, and we qualify for that because we've listed it as lost revenue.
But it's not listed as lost revenue under budget?
In our filing reports, it's listed as lost revenue. So I'll have to work with the accountants on that, but I'm just, I'm letting you know that it's been listed as lost revenue.
Just so the public knows when you look at the budget. Okay, got it. Motion?
Agree.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
You and Cheryl.
That's what I thought. So now we'll vote.
Mr. Benzie?
Does that mean anytime we spend money of the ARPA funds, it's going to cost us $8,000, or just for that whole year?
If you spend a certain amount, you trigger a single audit.
So each year, we're going to have to pay that?
One out of the three, possibly, if you spend the $750,000 in one year.
Did, plug it in. It was Marie and Cheryl who made the motion.
Correct, but Mr. Benzie had his hand up at one point.
Oh.
I was just going to call the question.
Oh.
We're going to vote.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Ms. Howe?
I'll say yes for this one, but.
Miss.
It's a lot of work.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, no. Construction, that's what I had. Construction estimates for D, items for action.
That's the.
I go ahead?
Yep. Please do.
Yes, the county has come down and told us, Anne Drive and Gary Lane and Timothy, I drove it, was, is real bad. And they will do the three roads for $340,104.35. And I move, we go ahead and ask the county to do it, and we use our ARPA funds.
I'll second that.
I have a question for you. What do you call a cross tube? Says cross tubes.
Yeah, but they don't have any.
We don't, okay, because I'm seeing 00.
The only place you have is on your totals.
Right, so that's so, our dollar amount is the cold milling, I understand that, for these three streets, correct?
Right.
Hang on, you're out of order, guys. Don't do in-house talking. Thank you. Otherwise, it'd be out of order.
I haven't said it works.
I know you haven't. So what I'm, is that what I'm understanding, how that's working?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
The milling of the road and the blacktop, moving of the manholes.
So your HMA is, that's a, I hate acronyms. What is that for? HMA?
Where you at?
Oh, very top.
Description of work. Under description of work, it says HMA, mill, and.
No, it says HMA 13A is what I'm looking at, very top. Is that, I hate acronyms. Is that what it is? Is that what it is? I have no idea. That doesn't sound right, but hey. Fits the acronym.
HMA.
HMA. The HMA is 250,766.75.
If I may, hot mix asphalt is known by different names, such as hot mix, asphalt, concrete, asphalt, or blacktop.
Okay, hot mix.
Blacktop.
Okay, hot, thank you. Oh my God, that really helps. Hot mix asphalt, correct?
That's concrete.
Asphalt with an A, okay. Asphalt, gotcha. Thank you.
Thank Google.
Thank you, Google. Google does everything. No, I learned how the Dewey Decimal System, so, okay. Slope registration. See, this is the first time we've seen this manhole. Engineering is 22700.
Okay.
Okay, hot, right, that was last my question. Because I don't know the acronyms. Okay.
Madam Supervisor?
Oh, yes. Yes, you may.
Thank you. Karen, how much would this bring our budget to for roads? It's probably well over a million with this 340,000, right? Are you comfortable with that in terms of our budget? I know you know it better. We haven't seen the latest numbers.
So the, the project in Hawk Hollow went 70,000 over, I think trustee Rosecrans indicated that because of some faulty base. I'm sorry, I was distracted. For the, for the base, there were some infrastructural issues with the base of that area, which cost additional $70,000. What I have learned over the last couple of years is if you don't do it this year, this will cost 50 to 70,000 more next year. I don't know where, if that helps or hurts this, but I do know that it will become more expensive. Next year.
Would you say staff are supporting this proposal?
I would support this, because I think next year, what we're going to look at is the Webster Road. There will be downtown and then the safe routes to school.
So this won't be done until 24?
No, this will be done this year, 2023. There's still time in the construction season.
No, I understand.
I'm just saying, next year, we won't, we won't be investing as much, because we'll be putting it in Webster Road and in downtown.
But I think trustee's question, if I understood it, so let me know if maybe I didn't, was do we have the funds in this year's account for this dollar amount?
You'd be approving, we have the funding, you would be approving the funding.
For this year, for 2023's payment.
If you're using ARPA, you're designating it as ARPA funds.
And you're saying it would be a budget adjustment for us?
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I was.
So it's either coming from ARPA, or it's coming from the general fund?
Well, we'll see. Everybody's, we got 1.3 million?
Can you repeat your motion, please?
Yes, that.
Is that what you have? 1.3 million?
A 1.27.
Get a contract with the county.
That's close enough.
Gary Lane, Anne Drive, and Timothy Lane.
Okay, using ARPA funds or general?
For ARPA funds for 340,104.35.
Okay, thank you.
First, make sure I'm understanding. Our first line would be ARPA, the second would be the general fund. So if we don't have it in ARPA, we would have it in general fund.
So we currently have 1.18 million in ARPA funds.
And you already know what the other committees are looking at as suggestions for use?
I do.
What we want, or what the township is looking at.
I do not know what the township's looking at committing.
So we don't really know.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? I think we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Kell, how about Mrs. Kellerman? I'm sorry.
Close enough. Close enough.
Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, no. Ms. Howe?
This'll shock Ryan. No.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm going to say yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Okay, what's that give us?
Four to three.
Four, three, yeah. Okay. Alright, looks like we are filing on page three. New business. Items for introduction. It doesn't appear to be any.
Yes, that was my stuff.
Oh, that's Sherry's stuff.
Sorry.
A and B, nope. That's my writing. It's too little. Okay.
Security in the office, I think, is pretty obvious that we need to do something. I personally, and this might shock some of you, but I am afraid to go into the office. I cannot afford to be, to go through what Marie did.
I think your A was duties of board of trustees, and B was workplace.
Oh, I didn't know which was A and B. Well, I took B before A. Okay, I think we need to discuss what our duties are as trustees, a future discussion, and maybe write it down and be clearer on what we do and what we're supposed to do, not turn everything over in her part, job for Karen to do everything. We need to make decisions. We need to be involved in every decision. Like, for instance, one of the things was I was not involved in the discussion when we received the attorneys coming to our meetings. I, as a trustee, had no idea what was, this was about, so I was left out of the discussion. Obviously, somebody had it, because they were asked to be here. So I would like to have a, kind of a roundtable discussion with our trustees, what we are supposed to do, what we should do, what we shouldn't do. And. That's a part of, that was a security, maybe, but, or it can also go here. Where are we going to do about this whole situation? That's the elephant in the room, guys. Where her office is, if this is the appropriate place to put that. And moving right into part B, which all goes together, trustees' jobs to our taxpayers. Those guys pay us to be here, to make decisions, and we have screwed up, in my opinion. And I'm afraid to go into the office, because my only word, and I've thought about this for weeks, months, she was framed according to our system of justice, our lawyers, and our judges deemed this inappropriate. I'm afraid to go in that office, because I, after many months, decided this person that I know did not assault somebody, in my own mind. That was my decision, and the courts just upheld it. That was my decision and the courts just upheld it. I'm afraid to go in there because I can't afford what she just went through. And we need to talk about this. If we need mirrors all the way around there and we need cameras that see every corner of our office, I don't know what we're going to do. But as an elected person, I cannot go in our offices because I don't want to be framed. And I don't know how else to put it. And we need to make decisions on those people that pulled this off. What are we going to do about it?
Go ahead, trustee.
Sherry, I like your idea about talking about what our roles are as board members. In past boards, we've had the attorneys come in and do training with us to better understand, like, how you pose that. What can we do, what can't we do, what's within our authority? We have decided on a system of government that we have shifted roles and responsibilities to staff. I think that's because of our size and complexity of the township. That's something that we, as a board, could always go back on if we thought that that's where we wanted to go. I think those are good conversations. And I think our attorneys, or some attorneys who know the laws, are good folks to give us that training.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, just, I feel like we've abdicated everything and actually put more of a load on Karen when we need to. We were elected, guys, by our taxpayers, who just got hit with over $50,000, if I understand the right. And we have only got started. Somebody owes her, she was found innocent. And that's going to probably come out of our taxpayers' money, and I don't like it. I don't like what happened in this office. And I'll stand up there, and that's what I want to be on the news, if we can have that public. This was, we are, we have a reputation in this township of being absolutely ridiculous. And what happened to her should never happen to any of us, or anyone else in that office. And I'm sorry if I'm emotional, but I have chewed on this for a long time, and I am very upset by what happened in our office, in this wonderful township of Bath. And we heard it from our public, loud and clear.
So, what you're looking at, so I understand. For your A, when you're talking about the workplace.
Safety in the workplace.
See, I wrote it too small, I can't read it.
Duties of the, duties of the boards.
Okay.
That we need to talk about that and have it, and the lawyers, a good idea.
So, you want a special meeting for that?
That would be, I think it would be a good idea.
Okay.
That we look at that, all of us.
Now, that you have to post, right?
Uh huh.
Okay. So, all right, that's one. So, your second issue, B, that you're talking about is workplace safety. Has, have you thought, and I'll ask you this because you're the one that's addressing that, have you thought of an ethics policy?
That would be a good thing to devise, perhaps, in our meeting.
So, that too would be a second special meeting, or do you want to put them together?
We can put them together, it's all of us in, in. I mean, this is new to me, I'm.
Okay, so there, I think.
Duties of the board of trustees and.
Responsibilities, duties.
Workplace safety.
And the safety in the office, like I said, I, we have to do something. When I'm afraid to go in there, I only come in on weekends to grab my papers when I'm not going to be accused of assault and battery and have to go to court. And that's a really bad feeling for an elected official to have in this township.
Any comment? Oh, yes.
I have a township guide for township government. Was given to us when we got on the township board and head classes, and I would be glad to share it with you. It's what a township trustee is supposed, position is.
Okay.
It's all spelled out at MTA.
Okay, yeah. Well, my question then, because I have one just like that, at least for supervisors.
Supervisors.
And it's really quite interesting to read because it doesn't apply to me, but that's okay. You know, I mean, that's what they claim I'm supposed to be doing. So, but that's not what I'm doing. So, I understand what you're saying with that, but that can be brought to a special meeting. Have you read it and highlighted it and picked out pieces of it that are important to you? Or you think are important that a.
The whole thing is important.
Really?
Oh, yes.
Okay, then bring the whole thing.
They tell you the first thing, you're the watchdog of the township.
That's, we're supposed to be.
Supposed to be, that's absolutely correct.
That's the first thing they told us in the meeting.
And what I guess I'm asking, if you want to bring that to the special meeting, because obviously there's an importance for you to that and what it says. Then, the special meeting that we're talking about, when she talks about workplace safety as well as board of trustee responsibilities. What you're saying, I think is what you're saying, so help me out here. That if you read that, you already know it. So, there's no reason to have a special meeting.
There's a lot of reading in there.
So, it's no reason to have a special meeting because it's all right there.
No, a meeting would be good.
Okay, okay, nope, that's what I wanted to make sure. Got another paw down here.
Brenda, did you provide us all with those books?
Did I? Now, hang on.
No, no, I just wanted to get it, because I have a copy. I said I have a copy of that book also, we were all provided with one.
Did you get one?
I did.
No, I think, I think I did, I. Okay. Yes, everybody.
You're referencing that. Your, thank you.
I heard you. I appreciate the reminder. When you reference, it's not what you're doing, is it because we're not a general law township, we're a charter township? Or, because, because when you approved my contract, those, a list of, I think it's like 10 or 12 things are given to me in state law unless you decide to change them. And is that what you're referring to?
No, what I referred to was, that's an important document to him. So, that important document, or to Joe, or whoever has it, should bring it to the special meeting so that we know what he feels is an important piece that deals with the issues that we're talking about.
You said the supervisor one didn't.
No, my supervisor one, it's quite interesting.
Okay. And I'm asking if that's because we're general, we're a charter township.
Oh, no, no, it has to do with decisions of what the supervisor is responsible to do.
If they haven't been delegated to me?
If they haven't been delegated. No, not to you. If they haven't, if the board hasn't changed them.
Okay, I was just trying to understand.
Your appendix is very clear, the charter township, A to P or whatever it is, A to O, they just picked it up, moved it over. I mean, that's literally what was done.
I was trying to understand just better what you were saying.
That was, okay. So, now what we're looking at, because this is an introduction discussion, but now we're looking at a special meeting, so.
And I would remind you, and not that this doesn't take precedence, we're already doing for the board meeting rules of order. So, would you like to suspend the board meeting rules of order in order to have this discussion next?
Why would you suspend them?
Because you have two topics, so you'd either need two meetings?
No, you can easily put that in one topic without, it has to do with responsibilities of the board in the workplace.
They're kind of intertwined anyway.
Yes, they are.
I was, I was referring to the board meeting rules of order.
I understand, so, no, I don't think there's an issue to have to suspend anything. It can be written.
Okay, I'm just, I was implying that we're getting through one page of meeting, so.
Yeah, we are trying to do that, aren't we? Okay. Now, we have, so, oh, good, we had a.
I just have a question, so if you want another special meeting for this, when are we going to actually have it?
That's a very good question, when are we going to actually have it?
I don't know, because we're doing the board rules.
Because we've got the budget coming up, we've got the rules coming up, how many special meetings can we have?
Well, that's, I think, was her opinion, that Karen was trying to say. Do we postpone doing the board rules in two weeks? So, we can do this in two weeks for the special meeting? Take, put this in the place of the board rules?
Oh, no, that's up to the board. You're the ones that called for this special meetings to deal with.
I think safety in the office is very critical.
Okay.
ASAP. Like.
So, it would be next Monday, 21st.
I don't even, I don't think it should, I think it should.
21st at 5:00.
I don't think it should wait that long.
Okay.
I, I can't go through the budget, I can't, I don't feel safe to go in that office.
Okay.
I cannot live through what you did.
I like you guys' uniforms.
Well, thank you.
You do, you look very good, very cool, very professional. So, they can't see you, but I can, so can they. Good job. So, what we're looking at then is next week, August 21st at 5:00, for a special meeting addressing the issues. The issue, because that can be, because that's what we were going to do for board meetings. Is that what you were asking? Because I was missing the whole point then. There's no suspension that needs to be.
You're putting board meeting rules of order aside.
To do this.
To take up this, other topic.
Right, we need to decide what we want to do.
Right.
But we hadn't decided at the board meeting when our next meeting was going to be.
I had assumed it would be the next meeting.
I know you assumed that, but we didn't say anything about it. So, we're not suspending anything, we're just.
Okay.
Replacing.
Changing the order of, of special meeting.
Well, we'll have the board rules again, after, the question is going to be really tough for this board to answer, is going to be budget. When are we going to meet for the budget? That's going to be the toughie.
The budget comes out September 1st. You'll take it up. It's required by law to come out September 1st.
Correct.
So, we would have that discussion, I'm guessing, the first discussion of many on the 5th of September.
At a board meeting.
Correct, unless indicated otherwise.
No, that's, so, that would take the whole board meeting. And that's okay, I'm not saying that.
Generally, in the past, I think we've discussed how we're going to handle the budget at that meeting. So, I think that's when we've determined, are we going to hold special meetings, are we going to do it during board meetings?
No, I understand, but when you say past, we're working in all uncharted areas of how we're going to do things, so. But, that's okay. At our next board meeting then, we'll decide what we're going to do with the budget, correct? And.
The budget comes out September 1st. So, if you'd like to do it ahead of time, we can do it ahead of time.
Nope, nope, that, that works, not until '24 for '25, but that's okay. No, you're right. So, we have another meeting coming up in August, and that's when we're going to meet for the issue of safety in workplace.
Office, how we're going to deal with the office situation altogether, your office.
Well, it'll be, we have to.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we decide what we're going to do with our office staff and our supervisor's office space. I make a motion that we reinstall Marie in her office ASAP, within a week. I'd like to make a motion that immediately do this. And her accusers, I don't know how we're going to deal with this, but she needs to feel safe in there. And when I voted to kick you out of the office, I did it for her safety, not the safety of the people in the office, just so that's on the record. And I feel the same way now, that we have to make the office safe for people to go in there and not be accused and found that she was innocent. I have to go with, our courts decided the right way. And that's why I'm afraid to go in there. And that's not a good way to have our office run. So, we need to make, I'd like to make a motion that we get Marie back in there and do whatever it is to make she and I both feel safe in that office. If we have to have uniforms in there every day that we go in there, that's going to be very expensive.
More than what it is for the attorney.
It is, and, no, I understand. That's what I felt like I was going to have to do.
Is anybody going to second, because if they don't, I will. All right. If I'm understanding the motion.
Hold on.
Because I know you're still writing. The, the motion that was made is to return the supervisor to her office. As soon as possible. No, no.
This week.
Thank you. Oh, my gosh, yes, all right, hang on, go ahead.
I would like to talk to our attorney before we make this.
Did we talk to the attorney when we kicked her out of the office? Did we have a legal?
Yes, you did.
We did have, I didn't know.
You sat right there with us.
She was in the meeting with us.
Oh, that was, sorry, okay. Yep, sorry, my blanked out.
Lizzie, do you mind coming? One more time?
Speak into the microphone, please. Yes, madam supervisor, what is the question? Specifically, I heard.
Oh. Well, the, the motion that's out there is the motion to return the supervisor to her office. Like, tomorrow.
I understand there's been a motion and a second, that's properly up for discussion if the board chooses to adopt or, or have it fail, that's up to the board at this time.
And what one of our trustees says, he doesn't want to make a decision without your input.
Well, I've provided that input. I, I think if the question is only about the office, it's pretty straightforward at this point. That is up to the board, if they need additional information or not, that's up not for me to speak to. I will caution the board if the board is thinking that there is some specific action to be taken against participants in the process. The, the reporting of what was perceived to be a crime and the engagement in the criminal process, because doing so is protected. And so, any negative actions regarding employment for those folks could be dangerous in terms of liability to the township. I, I recognize that may not be a popular opinion standing here, it's certainly not the last one I'm sure I will give standing here. But I think in terms of the, the question in front of you at this moment regarding the office, that's fairly straightforward. You, you can decide that as you see fit.
What liability does the township have for removing Ms. Howe from the office? Why is, was that not dangerous to the community in removing the people that testified? As I both see it from the court system, wrong, why removing them from the office would be any worse?
I will answer that in two parts as best I can, trustee Kellerman. To answer the first question, I believe I also answered this on the day that the vote was made regarding the office, that it is our opinion as legal counsel to the township, that the supervisor does not have a statutory right to the office. That the superintendent could have made that decision on her own, but the board made that decision. So, we do not consider there to be liability to the township for that action. I understand there is a difference of opinion regarding that, that is the case, I can't resolve that. As to the second issue, regarding the employee who made a complaint and any participants in the criminal proceedings. There is in fact a constitutional right to engage in the reporting of crimes or perceived crimes. And retaliation against an individual for doing so would, and I hesitate to give this in an open session, but I, I think I've been specifically asked.
Could do in a session.
That would, would give rise to constitutional concerns on behalf of those employees who would have been subject to, in their eyes, retaliation for engaging in the criminal process. There are a variety of civil recourse methods available to all parties engaged in this, whether it's Ms. Howe, whether it's the complainant. Those things are to be left between them, but as to whether they are simply to lose their position or otherwise experience adverse employment action for having been engaged in the criminal proceedings, that gives me great concern for the township.
Except I'm part of the township. See, that's what I don't.
It would be the first, the right to free speech includes by a court decision of the Supreme Court of the United States, the right to make criminal complaints. If there is a belief that that has been done improperly or under perjury or what have you, that is not for us to take action on in this case.
You know, that, that is an interesting piece because that's being talked about right now on the federal level, the constitutional right. That is quite fascinating, actually, from the standpoint that, yes, I do have a constitutional right to speak anything I want, whether it's the truth or not. I can say whatever I want. However, what they're projecting right now, and that's what I'm kind of listening to, is if you act on that particular speech that was made. Then it becomes a whole different ballgame for free speech. That's an interesting discussion that's taking place right now. If the action is taken on my lie, then I'm responsible for it. But I can lie all I want, as long as I don't take an action on it.
Is there a question, madam supervisor? I don't understand the question.
No, that's, I'm making a statement to your answer, was, your answer had to do with the free speech. And I'm questioning the free speech answer in that statement that I just made. And that's something that I guess I don't fully, well, yeah, I think I know the answer to it. But you, as an attorney, in your protection of health and welfare for Bath Township and its people, that's a question that needs to be answered. So, when you use free speech, that someone can say it, that's the question. So, I have no question for you. That's a statement that I'm making as to what I'm learning more about free speech. Okay, no, just so that's understood. I think that, did I answer a question?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Now, trustee, thank you, please. Do you want her up there again, because she'll have to trail it?
No, I think I have my answer, but if I could just clarify it, Sherry, there's nothing in your motion about anything to. about anything to do with the complainant in the case.
No. I guess she answered that, we can't. I'd like cameras up in the offices to stop this from happening again. That there's no spaces that anything could be, I could be accused of slugging somebody in the office.
But that's not part of this motion?
No.
No. That's in, that's in safety in the office, uh, security in the office.
Thank you.
Would you read the motion one more time?
I just have returned supervisor to her office, and one was this week, the other one was tomorrow. So, you guys have to decide. Well, okay, okay, how about, I'd make the motion that we return her within 10 days. Let's be reasonable, we have to move stuff around, does that sound? Okay, a week, a week. I hear the taxpayer saying tomorrow, so I guess if we can do it as fast as we can do it, I'd like her in there tomorrow. With, and I would like to make a motion also that we install cameras in the, in the, to stop.
Okay.
A motion at a time, sorry.
And not only that, I think what you're talking about is something they need to discuss for special meeting.
Okay, makes sense.
I think, that would be my thought.
Well.
Okay, so the motion being made by trustee Kellerman, just so we're understanding, has to do by returning this supervisor to her office tomorrow, which would be, what, August 8th?
8th.
Of 2023. I think that's... Does that sound right?
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody have any issues, discussions with that? Okay, I'll second it.
I have a question. I honestly don't feel safe with you coming back in the office.
Really?
Yes.
We've worked together eight years.
I know, Marie, but I will tell you.
That's okay.
No, I have to, all right, come on, let me have my say, you haven't got your say.
All right.
No, seriously, there is, I will say, I actually have a video of you hitting me.
Really?
Yes.
But it didn't come to court?
Well, because I didn't file a report.
I hit her, I hit you here in the office.
Yes, you did. I did, I did not even file a report, so you can't say that.
You're doing it on public record.
That's okay.
I am, I'm doing it on public record.
That's okay.
Marie, take control of the meeting, come on. It's 5:00 after the school.
I don't feel safe.
I didn't start the discussion.
Then work from home, I guess, that's the only other answer.
I didn't start this discussion, and that's what you got.
I'm a full-time treasurer.
And I'm scared to go in the office.
That's what you got.
There's cameras already in the office, we implemented that a while ago.
Sorry, you have to wait until afternoon.
If you would look around up top, you'd see them all.
They weren't in there.
All right, so anyway. So, she's afraid too, if I come to the office, so, okay. Is that the reason why I was removed from the office? Because nobody gave me any reason for it? Okay, that's fair enough, which I have to ask you for the meetings, for that closed session. But that's okay. I will ask you in writing, so that you've got it, and that'll help. Okay, are we, is there anything else that we have, action for items, items for action?
We got to vote, I guess.
That's true, we do have to vote, thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second, so now we'll vote.
Ms. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Ms. Butler-Challander? Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thanks for having me, Gus, I appreciate it.
That's true. All right, so, that takes care of that, now we go, and we're going to have a special meeting. So, now we have items for action, early voting.
Marie, I would like to make a motion that we extend our hours this evening past 9 o'clock.
Thank you. All right, the motion is to extend the hours after 9 o'clock, which of course now it's after 9 o'clock.
Okay.
Ms. Howe?
Well, you need a second, no, you're good, you need a second.
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes, Mr. Rosecrans?
No.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
I'm sorry about that, Al, but here we go, we've still got four more to go. Up next.
So, I handed you out some information on the early voting. I can make the decision, but I would like your guys' opinion also.
No, that's what I was looking for, we already have it. Nope, go ahead.
Clinton County is going to put on a countywide voting center, and we have the option to send Bath Township voters to Dewitt Charter Township and Bingham Township. That's option one, or Bath Township can become an early voting center. And we would go in with Bath Township, Dewitt Township, Treasure Township, and Bingham. Okay? I'm just asking for your opinion or support in, you know, which option would work best for our voters. I think that they would like to come here, but I'd like to know other people's opinions. This is the early voting where we're open nine days, nine days before election. It would be, the county would do the testing and everything on the equipment, they would rent us the equipment. I would be in charge of the nine days of early voting. The county would pay our workers. We would, there's 33 precincts in Clinton County. So, each precinct would need to staff a day of voting. Okay? If we do option one and send our voters to Dewitt Township and Bingham Township for three elections, it'd be about $10,500. If we become, if we join Dewitt and Bingham, it would be a little over $15,000.
When you say join them, you mean we would, each?
We would have, there would be three county voting centers.
Each one, each day? I mean, all three would be offered each day, correct?
All nine days.
I got a question, go ahead, we've got two of you going. Trustee Rosecrans?
I think we should have our own people vote in Bath Township.
I agree.
It won't cost us that much more money, and we owe it to our people. Don't drive so far.
Trustee Fiedwin Bliss?
I agree with that, I think for decades, maybe even longer, people have been told you have to vote in the community in which you live. I don't think folks in general know that the law has changed and you can vote elsewhere in the county for these nine days. I think folks want to vote in their home community, and that's where they want to have influence. And I think we should be a leader in elections countywide. As long as you and your staff think you can pull it off, I don't want to cause you too much pain, but I think it would be something great for our community.
Okay, we, can I have my statement? Nope, go ahead.
So, we, I'm already going to open a precinct for early voting, so that would be one precinct. I would open this precinct up for the nine days of early voting. The county would do all the testing and stuff, I would run it. Other people, other election inspectors from like Dewitt or City of St. John's would come down and run it one day. Okay? Now, we would be open for the 60,000 residents of Clinton County. They really only expect less than 200 to participate in a day. We really, this is our proposal too, we really have no idea what's going on, until it happens the first time.
Okay, I got a question.
Sure.
What you're talking about then is Bath Township would keep its five precincts.
No, we're only going to have, my ideas are one precinct, and we would have it.
So, your thought is, you made the decision, it'd be three precincts, right?
No, that's the AB County Board.
Okay, so, what are we going to do when they say Bath Township residents are going to vote in Bath Township?
Bath Township residents can vote at any of the locations, Bath Township, Dewitt Charter Township, or Bingham Township.
And they can come here.
Just like anybody else, any other registered voters in Clinton County can go to those three locations.
Okay, so that means that everybody else has to come here?
No, three places.
So, they can choose to go to Dewitt or St. John's? So, that's our choice, your choice. So, it's either they go to St. John's and vote at Bingham, or they go to Dewitt?
Or here.
Or here, okay.
Gotcha.
And that's two?
That's option two.
That's option two, okay. But if we didn't do that?
Dewitt Charter Township or Bingham?
One of those two places.
Correct. Okay.
I make a motion we do number two.
I'll second it.
All of a sudden, I may have missed, you guys are already voting, so go ahead, that's.
Oh.
Yes, you do.
That was, that was the question initially, was whether or not the clerk can make that decision on her own.
And I can, but I'm asking for their opinion.
But her decision was to come to the board to make a decision on it. So, again, that's an item for action. So, it's not a discussion, it's not an introduction of any new information. What it is, is for us to vote whether or not Bath residents can vote in St. John's. They can vote here, they can vote in St. John's, they can vote in Dewitt. The option one would have been we, as Bath Township, would have had to have gone. Sorry about that, we would have had to have gone to the other townships to vote. Okay, so who said the motion?
So, we got a motion?
Sheri made it.
Sheri.
She said option two.
To do two.
To partner with Clinton County to become an early voting site along with locations in Dewitt Charter Township and Bingham Township, and to split the cost among the jurisdictions participating. And that cost would bring it down to the $15,900.
I put it somewhere, 15,000.
Al, did you second?
Yeah.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes, Ms. Howe?
I'll say yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, a question after the fact.
Sure.
After the fact, because that's done. If we had chosen option one, we would have had to have gone to others. Now that we've chosen option two for you, all of those people in Dewitt can come to Bath to vote.
Anybody in Clinton County?
Anybody in Clinton County?
Yeah.
Why, why do we have?
Clinton County voting centers.
So, I could go to St. John's and vote? Oh, all right. Sheri, I was thinking that you were stable in what you were asking. In other words, we could only go to where our precincts are.
No, we're only opening, we're only opening one precinct, and that's going to be at the community center.
And that will be Bath Township, so we will all go to Bath Township regardless.
It will be an early voting.
Right, if you vote early.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Just for the nine days of early voting.
So, they have to have the ballots for each place, and give the right one to the right. Yes, please.
Trustee Kellerman was asking the question of.
I just, clarify it.
Because she was, she said, well, not all the ballots are the same. And so, to my understanding, they will have a ballot printer available, so that if trustee Kellerman were to go to Dewitt or St. John's, they would print your ballot.
My Bath ballot.
No, that's what I had to do when I voted, because I went to Victor Township to vote, so, okay.
Just a detail.
It is a detail. And many people are confused on that, myself included, obviously. All right, so we have a motion for option two, did we get a second?
We already voted.
We're all, we're all done.
God, I'm worse than.
We're just doing questions.
Threw me off when you were talking, I was going to say, all right, so I haven't marked it. Yes, we have the tax rate.
So, this is an item, thank you, that comes before you each year. The township board must set the township's tax rates every September, and then this L-4029 document completes the process, and we file it with the county.
Why do we do this?
It sets our tax rates for the following year.
For, that sets Bath Township tax rate. Or Clinton County's tax rate.
No, it's just, if you see the second page that's attached, it's for our charter operating millage, the police and fire millage, and the public library millage.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 tax rate request on the L. 4029.
Second.
Yep, got a second, so.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes, Ms. Howe?
Someone's got a question. Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that passes. Is that unanimous?
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, on C, items for action, statutory and advisory committee boards and commissions.
I am asking tonight for the board to consider the statutory and advisory committees, boards, and commissions. There used to be a requirement that they meet in this room utilizing the dais for their meeting, and then videotaping and forwarding copies of approved minutes. So, I'm asking for this board to reaffirm that decision. You do, you do not have on here the housing commission. The public art committee now meets here in this room. Oh, okay. And then the board of review, which we do not tape.
I'll make a motion that all statutory advisory committees, boards, and commissions meet in the board room and record their meetings.
I'll second it.
We invested a lot of money in this room.
Can I ask a question before you? Yes, you can.
I'm just making the motion, you can ask.
He's just making the motion, Al seconded it, now you have a discussion.
Did I get a second?
No, you've got a second.
Then, that we have to sit at this here, we can't put our table over there, why?
Correct, because the, that microphone, even though it's being put in the middle of the tables, does not pick up on the sound. That has been one of the largest complaints even of this body sitting in this room tonight, clearly, is that people are not using the microphones. And so, in order to adequately hear the sound of people talking during the meetings, this is really the best option.
So, that means that when they speak at the podium, they're not heard?
No, what I'm saying is when they put, I think they put three or four tables together, so they can meet around that table.
And they bring that one over.
That is not adequate to catch the sound.
So, it's not adequate for public comments?
It is, because they're speaking straight into it, but when you have a group of people sitting around it.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're trying to say that because it's in the middle.
You would almost have to hand it around and speak into it if that was the case.
They could do that.
I'm asking for them to use this table.
No, and for me, and I'll make another statement before anybody else does, in mediation, or groups where people do a lot of working together, they do round tables, they don't do this setup. This is a very awkward kind of setup for that kind of committee. So, if you're going to do this, I would write utilizing the dais for seating for participating members, except the senior center board of trustees, or board of senior center advisory board. SSAB. If that's, if that's what you're looking at, because that particular, because I've been to that committee a number of times, and they're very active, very good at what they do, but they're sitting in like. and they're very active, very good at what they do, but they're sitting in like a circle kind of thing, as opposed to a straight line.
And I understand that, but what I'm indicating is that the sound is not being picked up properly.
No, we can fix that. I mean, I'm sure they can fix it. I'm not saying me. But if you're saying that that's not proper, that's not enough, they can pass it around if someone's got something to say. But the point I'm trying to make with it is because they are a very active, positive committee, and they are, they meet in a circle, which is really the proper thing to do. This is, when you work in a straight line like this, and you know that, because he's looking at me like, are you kidding? But it's true. When you work with people to be able to come up with a consensus, working in a circle is a far better way than working in a straight line. So I'm saying if you want to do this, and I understand what you're saying, um, utilize the DAS for seating and participating members except, and they would be the exception, because that's how they work. So.
I, I think you have a motion and a second, so I don't know if they're.
No, I'm, I'm just, that's my statement. So the motion is to pass this the way it is. And I think you made the motion, don't you, Al? Okay. And I have a second. By Al. So that was my discussion for me for that particular issue. Have you understood? Okay.
So the main, the motion says require the statutory and advisory committees, boards and commission of Bath Charter Township to adhere to the Open Meeting Act, Meetings Act, including requiring notifying the clerk of any changes in meeting schedules, holding meetings in the Bath Township boardroom, utilizing the DAS for seating of participating members.
Except.
They didn't change their motion, though. Is that what we're doing? We're gonna stick to the first one? Okay. Okay. Do a roll call?
Was it modified or not modified?
Is it not modified?
No, not modified, because it was already made a motion.
Okay.
Give it right, so not modifying it.
Not modifying it.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Ms. Howe?
No.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes.
Okay. Now in this mess of papers. I'm beginning to feel like Miles. Okay, um, that was C. D, AT&amp;T Metro Act Right-of-Way, and that would be 14D, as in David.
So the township approved a Metro Act right-of-way permit with AT&amp;T, um, which was formerly Michigan Bell Telephone. Haven't heard that in a while. Um, in, uh, 2018 and it's set to expire at the end of this year. AT&amp;T through, um, the Michigan Metro Act, um, is requesting an extension of their current permit.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. It expires December?
December 31st.
31st of 2023.
Yep, 2023.
This year.
Correct.
Okay.